Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting. We're going to get started now. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice stated December 30, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. And could we please have the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston? We'll come back. Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox?
Here.
Council President, we will reflect that although Councilmember Hairston's on the screen, she did not sign in.
Right, so we'll just, we have a few other items and then we'll go back. I think. Okay, so we'll move on now to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone could please stand. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President.
Yes. For the record, Councilmember Hairston?
Here.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, so we've got everyone. All right, so now, Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTB on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Thank you. One last thing, unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, moving on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular enclosed-session meeting minutes of April 5th and April 19th?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to reports. Our mayor is not here this evening, so I'll turn it over to the City Administrator, Michael Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Beginning on or about Monday, May 9th, work will begin on Crest Acre Court, Carleen Court, Meadow Brook Court, and Woodcroft Road to repair curbing, install new curbing where none currently exists, construct ADA-compliant curb ramps, and upgrade stormwater structures. This work will be followed by milling and paving of these roadways. Project work is expected to take approximately eight weeks, weather permitting. Affected residents will receive notice from the contractor. Police will be on-site to direct traffic, and access to emergency vehicles will always be provided. Tomorrow, May 4th, the state of New Jersey bag ban goes into effect. Plastic bags are banned at every store, with paper bags being prohibited for use by grocery and other large stores. There is a drop box in the lobby at City Hall where people can donate new or gently-used bags, and more importantly, if you are unable to afford to purchase bags, please take what you need. This effort will continue through the month of May. And then finally, the Summit Police Department Annual Food Drive will begin on Friday, May 13th, and run through Friday, June 3rd. All collected items will be donated to the Loaves and Fishes Food Pantry of St. Teresa Avila Church located in Summit. The police department is asking for donations of canned food and non-perishable items. A collection bin will be in the police department lobby at City Hall, right outside, and other Summit locations. Please go to the city website at cityofsummit.org for more information. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, for the Council President's report. I wanted to provide some clarifications and an update on the Broad Street West redevelopment, as there's been a good deal of misinformation that has been shared. When this effort began, this council and the elected officials before us insisted on community input. It has been essential in making sure that the design and the amenities reflect the preferences expressed by our residents. Input continues to influence design, and recent changes have been made to the redevelopers, by the redevelopers, to create additional breaks and open space beyond what has already been shown, to add sufficient parking and open space that transforms paved surfaces into sustainable green spaces and tree-lined streetscapes. We have met with the redevelopers, and we have passed along a lot of the comments that we've heard, and we've asked them to please propose something in response to that, and we are waiting for that. And once we get it and have a chance to look at it ourselves, we will come out to the public with a presentation and an opportunity to ask questions. So we will have that town hall, but at this point, we don't have the timing lined up until we know when we're going to get that proposal. So, meetings with key stakeholders, just going back, meetings with key stakeholders have been an important part of conducting research and informing this project design. The project team has met with residents of senior housing, has met with Summit Free Public Library, the board at the Summit Free Public Library, has met with St. Teresa's, and also with the Summit Area YMCA. And meetings with the library are ongoing, with the library board, to discuss how this project fits with their operations. And this outreach continues to be an important part of this project. At the town hall this past Wednesday, a presenter who is unaffiliated with the project provided some information on the project that was inaccurate. There are corrections that have been prepared by the official city planner, Topology, and I'm going to share a few of them now. You can also find those corrections on the city website at cityofsummit.org/BSW, along with other important project information. First of all, the architectural, the planner described the architectural design as "not well-thought-out." Current plans have been through 68 redesigns at the developer's expense at a cost of over $700,000 to make it consistent with the master plan, the redevelopment plan, the DRO, and feedback from stakeholders and the public. The architectural style of this project was driven by a precedent image that, in the redevelopment plan, that was selected during the outreach process. So in 2018, we had a meeting where residents were asked to identify images that they liked, and there were certain images that were overwhelmingly chosen by the public, and those ended up in the redevelopment plan and are the basis for the designs that we have shown you. So this isn't something that's been pulled out of a hat. The planner said that Cedar Street was being privatized. That's not correct. Cedar Street is not being closed. It's being designed to allow for easy road closure during an event if the Y or the library chooses to schedule an event with a closure, and that's up to them. It's something that was added to accommodate what the Y and the library said they wanted to have the ability to do. The planner also said that the city had satisfied its affordable housing obligations. That is not correct. The city has a goal of, has to meet 50 affordable units by 2025. This project will provide for 21 of them. We have 17 others that are already underway. So this is something that's important for us to accommodate, to meet our affordable housing obligations. The presenter also suggested the city sewer lines couldn't accommodate the redevelopment. That is not true, and as Mr. Schreger explained at the last meeting, that has been addressed. There's capacity, and the force main is actually located adjacent to the property. The redevelopment plan has always contemplated structures that would be up to five stories or 70 feet in height, so the proposed building is not inconsistent with that plan. As part of the redevelopment, the redeveloper will create 20,392 square feet of new open space, and that doesn't include the public roads or St. Teresa's. The open space that is provided is, in fact, usable and filled with amenities such as public art, green infrastructure, seating, and more. If you look at the area today in its current form, there is no public open space in Sub-District 3. As I said before, a public meeting will be scheduled as soon as possible, once we have revised plans from the redeveloper. There will also be an opportunity for community review and feedback. Council will also provide a timeline for the remainder of the process so that everyone is clear on what is happening and when. As elected officials, we strive every day to help improve the quality of life for all of us. Mayor and council firmly believe that redevelopment is essential to creating a viable and prosperous future for this community, and by continuing these productive conversations, we will bring forward a project that does exactly that. So with that, I will, I just want to, we have something that's not on the agenda, which is a proclamation for the, let's see, it is Municipal Clerk's Week this week, apparently. So, surprised. So I'm just going to read a quick proclamation since the mayor's not here to do so. So, whereas a time-honored and vital part of the local government exists through the office of the municipal clerk, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is one of the longest-standing professions among public servants, and provides the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the official secretary to the mayor and council, the city's record keeper, issues license and permits, facilitates the annual appointments meeting, attends countless council meetings, coordinates the election process, and serves as a community resource to all, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas municipal clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of their esteemed office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, now, therefore, I, Nora Radist, I'm reading this on her behalf, mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby recognize the week of May 1st through 7th as Municipal Clerk's Week in the City of Summit, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Rosemary Lecatise, and all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In witness thereof, I have set here unto my, set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this third day of May in the year 2022. So with that, congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's an honor, it's an honor and a true pleasure to work in this town. The irony here is, when I was in high school, I served as the secretary to the student council, and I swore I would never do that again. I don't know how I got here, but I enjoyed every moment.
And we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
So thank you, Rosie. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll go back to the agenda. We are going to do, we're going to cover the budget hearing before we do public comment. So our first item of business will be the finance resolution. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 9657. So this resolution amends the 2022 municipal parking and sewer operating budgets. It updates anticipated revenues, Section 3 miscellaneous revenues, Section B, state aid on the school debt service aid line from $153,371 to $256,831. This resolution is needed because the state increased the amount of the aid that will be provided, and that happened after the budget was proposed. The resolution also moves $6,000 from operating expenses to debt service in the sewer utility budget. This change does not alter the total appropriations, but rather switches a line item. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, so we'll need a roll call vote on, or do we do comments?
Do you want to open for comments?
Yeah. So are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? So, hearing none, all those?
We'll do a roll call.
Roll call, yep.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So now, moving on to the budget hearings. You don't have to read anything that's not in it.
No, I don't have to read.
So it goes right to Councilmember Vartan. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. So, at our council meeting on April 5th of this year, we adopted Resolution 40226 that introduced the municipal parking and sewer operating budgets and established a hearing date. That hearing date will take place now, after I make some opening comments. Those comments fall into three categories. First, gratitude. Second, procedural items. And third, the story that this budget tells. Thanks are due to many people for their work on this budget. Thank you to the municipal finance team, Administrator Michael Rogers, and Chief Financial Officer Tammy Baldwin. Next, thank you to department heads and municipal employees. Thanks are due to Congressman Malinowski, Senators Booker and Menendez, the United States Congress, and President Biden for passing the American Rescue Plan, as we continue to see the benefits of that legislation in the form of direct financial aid for pandemic relief. Thank you to my colleagues on the Finance Committee, Mayor Radist, Council President Fox, Councilmember Susan Hairston, and thanks to all of my other colleagues, Councilmembers Allen, Little, Miniger, and O'Sullivan, for the time you have spent going through this document, asking questions, speaking with me, and applying the high level of consideration and care the people of this community have come to expect and certainly deserve. Finally, thank you to everyone in the community who's here this evening to engage in this process. There are two quick procedural points I'd like to make. First, we have a Scrivener's error in the budget resolution. On the second page of the resolution, parking revenue and appropriations are listed as $2,140,000. Both of those numbers should read $2,430,228. This is an error that does not affect the rest of the budget document, and therefore the change does not require an amendment to the budget. Second, this evening, we will hold a hearing on this budget. Then we'll hold a hearing on the Special Improvement District budget, and then I will introduce a resolution authorizing the adoption of those budgets. So, when taxes are paid in Summit, approximately 50% goes to the schools, approximately 30% goes to the county, and the approximately 20% that's left is what can be used by this council to make the city run. As I've said numerous times, there's no better indication of the values of a government than how it spends money. Operational and strategic objectives guide spending. They are listed in the budget, and here they are. One, operate a safe, responsive, and healthy city government as the COVID-19 New Jersey state health emergency is lifted. Two, demonstrate fiscal responsibility and sound financial management. Three, redevelop Broad Street West. Four, expand the application of technology to create business opportunity and increase customer convenience. Five, maintain and upgrade critical city assets and infrastructure. Six, build community connectedness and expand communications effort. Seven, leverage talent, ideas, and creativity in Summit's municipal workforce. Eight, offer innovative solutions to ongoing municipal challenges. And nine, retain and reinitiate improved customer service and accessibility. The total summary of revenues and appropriations is $52,466,658. This represents a 1.98% increase in the municipal tax rate, and combined with the school and county tax rates, the overall increase in tax rate for this year is approximately 0.7%. This number is likely to decrease slightly when the county finalizes Summit's apportionment. This budget sends a statement to the people of this community that the council is deeply committed to delivering extremely high-quality government in a responsible, strategic, and transparent manner. So I move to open the hearing on this budget. Thank you.
I second it.
Okay, so, open the hearing. Before we start taking comments from the public, I just wanted to note, for those of you standing in the back, if you want to go to the left of the doors, there are chairs, if anyone wants to bring a chair in. Feel free to do that. So if you go out and to the left, okay? So with that, if anyone has any comments from the public on the budget, come on up. Please state your name and address. When you get to the microphone, please just state your name and address before you give your comment.
Before I do that, I want to congratulate you, Rosie.
Thank you, Gil.
You deserve it.
Thank you.
You're there because of your competency.
Aw, thank you very much.
I'm Gil Orin. I live at 45 Wallace Road and practice law downtown as a tenant and building owner. The comment, I, everybody, I guess, in town got a copy of the two-pager, and it stated, I guess it's correct, traditionally, parking had a surplus that was applied to the budget. In 2019, it was $800,000, not a small amount, and zero now. Why is that?
Pandemic.
Yes, that's a victim of the COVID-19 pandemic. So we're in our third year, through you, Council President?
Yep.
We're in our third year of extremely challenging municipal parking situations. So 2020, we actually, the council suspended parking fees for, I think it was eight months. Could be longer, it could have been longer.
It was about four months.
Four months. And then, in 2021, we also, I think, about broke even, and now, we're here in 2022.
We used to have a revenue of about $3 million.
It makes sense. Now that the governor has terminated the emergency of COVID, it is a call for everybody to go back to normal. Do we expect that to be a surplus in parking as we go forward?
Yes, sir, we certainly hope so.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the public? Go on once.
Council President, I have one public comment. I have two, actually, one from the mayor.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So read the mayor's first. Or do the public one first, and then we'll, and then we'll go to, if there are no other members of the public, then we'll have council members' comments.
Okay, fine. Unless this is public comment, I think that's Broad Street West.
Oh, this is Broad Street, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes, that's Broad Street.
Okay, Broad Street, we're going to put that on Broad Street. Okay, so this is a statement that the mayor wished for me to read for on her behalf. First, I want to thank Michael Rogers, Tammy Baldwin, and all of the department heads and the members of the Finance Committee, Greg Vartan, Susan Hairston, and Marjorie Fox, who worked so very hard to create this budget. Along with our city staff and elected officials, they strive every day to provide the services that Summit residents demand and expect in the most affordable way possible. Frankly, for the 27 years in which I lived in Summit before I was elected mayor, I did not understand this diligence. Now I do. We have an increased budget this year, the first in three years, and while that is not ideal, it is necessary. Going forward, unless the city takes meaningful steps to increase revenue sources, Summit residents can anticipate annual property tax increases along with decreased expenditures. Best regards, Nora Radist. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'm going to now open it up to members of council who have comments. Go ahead, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President, and again, thank you, Councilman Vartan and the finance team. Thank you to our department heads. There were a lot of tough choices to make this year. I just have a couple of things from, and last year, we benefited from an increase in net asset value of our real estate, and this year, I think last year was 28 million. This year, we benefited, our net asset value of all real estate was 37 million, which, it goes unnoticed, because it's not something that we planned for. And the 37 million this year was over $300,000 to our bottom line. So my question is, what if our net asset value comes in level, or we have a slight decrease? What does that do to our financial picture, suppose it, like, this year?
Would you like to take that one, Michael? Okay.
Councilman, if we hadn't received, if our tax base did increase?
If our net asset value was just level.
So, as you stated, it was a little over 300,000 amounted to in municipal taxes. We often say a tax point will refer to truly one cent of the municipal tax rate. That's the equivalent of approximately $325,000. So, just with that tax base increase last year going into this year, it basically covered about one cent of dollars spent on the appropriation side or budgeted, and that was helpful, incredibly helpful this year. And certainly, every year, in fact, the last five years or so, it's been over, accumulatively, about $100 million of growth, which is fantastic. It helps offset, so if we're having growth in our tax base, it certainly offsets any revenue decreases or appropriation increases, so it's incredibly helpful for our budget.
Yeah, and I just have, I just have one more. And this goes to, I guess, to the public safety. I noticed, one of our goals and one of our key actions on the mailer that was sent out, that to purchase geofencing and license plate recognition technology and in-vehicle camera systems for law enforcement. Are we getting all we need in that area? Maybe that's a question for the chief.
Chief Zloreski.
I don't know if he's here. Chief Zloreski.
Chief, yes.
Where are you? I'm sorry. I can repeat. So, I noticed in our mailer, our budget mailer, that we have as a goal, and then, a goal is to reduce criminal activity, increase ability to respond in emergency situations, and then, one of the key actions is to purchase geofencing and license plate recognition technology and in-vehicle camera systems for law enforcement to effectively, to more effectively safeguard the community. Are we getting all we need? Are you getting all you need in that, in that way, to have more of those license plate readers around town so that we can catch more bad guys?
Yes, I am, and...
Do you want to come up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Yes, I'm getting a great deal of support from the council and the mayor regarding combating this recent problem with the car thefts. We are working on putting together plans for the 2023 capital to purchase additional license plate readers for that geofence that we're talking about.
Fantastic.
Are we likely to get state funding for that as well?
We're looking into that as well. Just yesterday, I believe the governor announced that there were some COVID funds available.
Right.
So we're looking into tapping into that, too.
Is that for next year, or could that potentially be sooner?
Well, the 2023 budget we're working on right now, the capital, for that, but the one with the governor, I'm not sure. We're just, just found out about that today, and we're looking into it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, is that all that you have, Councilmember O'Sullivan? I just had one question as a follow-up, Michael. Councilmember O'Sullivan asked about increased value in, you know, increased assessed value, but if there's a financial downturn, we could, we could potentially have the opposite happen. Is that correct?
Sure. It's happened, happened a few years ago, there was a decrease in net assessed valuation. Through longtime residents, you've seen property values go up and down, particularly in that 2009 to 2012 time period, there was considerable loss of tax-based revenue, tax-based valuation, which in turn hurt the revenue. So when there is a loss in revenue, it not only affects you budgetarily with tax appeal, attorney fees, certainly, we, there's years where we're putting monies into a reserve for tax appeals, which we do have a pretty healthy reserve, to offset any type of tax court judgments. So there's, and then you're losing that value. So not only are there refunds that you go, that go back to the property owners, whatever is to determine value, but there's, it could certainly go the other way. And there was some concern back, a few years ago, back in 2009, actually, about '18, after the federal tax reform of housing values going down, which didn't play out, but there's always that concern, and certainly, what's going on in the world today, things could certainly change, and it could happen pretty quickly, so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Are there, I think, Councilmember Little? Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, maybe I've worked for our finance committee for all their work, and as past, to the finance committee, I don't think it can be overstated how much work has done around making this budget, and I've seen it firsthand. done around making this budget, and I've seen it firsthand, both as the chair of the capital committee and as the chair of the finance committee. Every line item in this budget has been gone over multiple times, both in the departments, and the heads of departments looking at our own budget, then coming to finance, and then finally coming to the cap committee to the capital project. This budget process takes months and months and months, and so much care and attention goes into this budget, it just really can't be overstated. And this really is such a challenge to bring new budgets in, glad that we've done them last few years, there was a small increase this year, especially in time, it doesn't happen by accident, it doesn't happen easily, it takes a lot of really difficult decisions and difficult conversations. And we certainly did that in the capital committee, and looking at our capital budget this year, we had to make very, very difficult decisions, and really pick the things that are really, that needed to be done this year, and that were really crucial, that we felt were crucial services for the city, but there were things that we wanted to do that we couldn't do, that we had to push off. And I just think that in the larger context of working at Broad Street West and looking at this as one way to offset these challenges that we're facing, this is a, this is a project, there's clearly some opposition, there's clearly, you know, definitely opposition to it that was heard this week, but what we really have to ask ourselves, and the people in the room, I would, I would ask you to ask yourself, even if you don't like this project, and I understand that many people don't, and have problems with it, do you like the alternative better? Because if we don't do something to offset these costs and these financial, you know, stresses that we are having, we're going to have to keep making these more difficult decisions, we are going to keep having to raise taxes and cut services. And we, you know, if you don't like something about the project, just ask yourself if you like the alternative better, and what your, what your answer would be to this, you know, this problem and these stresses that we are facing, because this was, we, this is the problem we're facing every day, this is the hard work that's going into this, to try to make these taxes stable, keep everything, you know, physically responsible, and keep Summit a great place to live, and that people can afford to live. And so, I know how much effort's going into this, I know that this is the goal of the council members and staff and administrators here in the city, and, you know, everyone on the same page trying to do this. So keep that in mind as you evaluate the efforts that are going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Councilmember Hairston, is your hands up?
No, but if you called on me.
Okay, go ahead, I just couldn't tell if it was.
I would, I would like to echo and thank Councilwoman Little for the efforts of the capital committee, and what I do want to thank our residents, I think there's one, our tax-paying revenue has been remarkably high for communities throughout New Jersey. And so, that was the one thank you that I wanted to add to the list of how we have really been challenged, and everyone's doing their part, including our tax-paying revenues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston.
Does anyone else have any comments? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Council President. I do also want to thank everyone for working on this budget. It's complicated, it was my first really year going through it, and the amount of detail, and Councilman Vartan going through it and explaining it, I really appreciate Tammy's work and Administrator Rogers, sorry, I was going to say Michael. So, I know that there have been a lot of tough decisions that have been made, and COVID was really difficult. I'm hopeful, actually, I think Mr. Orin, and I apologize if I got the name wrong, I'm hopeful that the parking will come back, and so, that will be a source of revenue that we're going to end up recapturing. So even though it's hit our budget significantly, I would say, a couple questions. One, do you believe that we would get this revenue back for parking?
That's a probably a good question.
It'll eventually go to. Through you, Council President.
Yes, of course.
Sorry.
I'm going to throw that one to Michael, I can't.
Councilwoman Allen, I.
I don't have the crystal ball.
So, we certainly had, I will look at 2020 as a year that, short of just completely not functioning at all and not receiving any revenue, it came pretty close of just no revenue activity whatsoever, and cost. It was truly an abysmal year. I feel like when you hit rock bottom, we'll think of 2020 from the parking services end. I hope to never experience that in my life ever again, and I hope no one else has to, for the obvious reasons. It did, it did improve last year, we did certainly exceed what we had anticipated for the 2021 budget, which helped build some more surplus, but we're trying, you know, we tried to responsibly use it this year for that respective budget, but we still are not in a position to carry over any of that type, you know, excess revenue into the general, general budget. I, I am hopeful, I don't know if we get back to 2019 levels anytime soon, because of how work has changed for people and their commuting patterns. So, I don't know where that goes, we'll still continue, I think the trend is positive, I think we're, we're doing fairly well first quarter, and I haven't looked at April's numbers. So we are improving. As Mr. Orin said, we did, we were able to take over $800,000 into the general budget in 2019. I don't expect to get there anytime soon, but I, I'm hopeful that next year, we'll be able to bring something over. So, we'll, we'll monitor it, and we'll certainly consider it, if it makes financial sense to do so, for 2023.
Okay. Sure. Let's go ahead. So that's, my second question would be that, over about 10 years, I guess the budget went up about, I think we've done a great job in general, that it's about 6.6% that it's gone up. One, I did notice that the industrials went down, so I think around, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, 2017, it was around 7.4%, and it has gone down to about 4%. So, do we anticipate capturing that back? Because Selgene, I'm sorry, BMS currently, West is building, and then the East, we have also had another developer purchase those, that campus. So do we, are we doing any projections five years out to, to understand what kind of revenue we'll be recapturing, so we know that we're putting that back in the budget? Because I'm hopeful that we can bring that back up.
Yeah, so that was the majority loss in that classification, real estate classification, was the Broad Street, I'm sorry, the Bristol Myers West Campus. There was a huge tax bill, it's been well documented about what took place there before Selgene even acquired it in 2015. We are, there is considerable plans there, there are, as anybody passes by, there's a lot of work going on on that property. We do expect valuation to increase from those, from those projects. We, I am, our tax assessor, Tim O'Connor, is looking at it, will continue to monitor through construction activity, I think that that's kind of how we're looking at it, and we'll be able to get some estimate of that, but they, it's multi-years, so we do expect some growth there by the end of the year, as they finish projects, because that's really only one, it's the time when you can start to assess something differently, is when they complete the projects. So, we do, don't have an accurate, or even an accurate estimate at this point, because it just depends upon how they progress on the, on the property, but we do expect to capture, you know, what we lost, not, maybe not entirely, we'll say, I hope it does. I mean, I, if they, if they stick to their plans and they develop this out over the next several years, it could, it could certainly get back to that number that was there earlier last decade, and that would be incredibly helpful for the residents of Summit.
Yeah. Okay. And I think my final question would be that we are, when we look at the budget and the growth that we've had in residential, Broad Street West adds to that residential base. There will be some retail in there, I don't know what we want to call it, retail or office space, but I don't know if we can talk about that now, but I guess in terms of just thinking forward, in, for Broad Street West, when we're looking at our budget and we're worried that we're expanding our residential, because with the building, there's 140 apartments in there currently, so we're expanding that residential base, so I don't want to get too off track here, but in the budget, we've been saying, we're getting away from businesses, we're getting away from industrial, our residential base is growing, so I'm just saying, putting it out there. So as we think about Broad Street West, you know, that is expanding, what we're saying is more costly to our budget, so.
Not, through you, Council President?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, go ahead.
That's not entirely accurate, right? Because we're, what we're talking about with Broad Street West is the potential for a payment in lieu of taxes, and that essentially takes the area off of the tax rolls, and then, we will get 10, you know, under the proposal right now, the city would receive 10% of the top-line revenue of the development. So, in essence, it, what we're saying is, there, there is a significant potential new source of revenue that does not come from existing residential taxpayers right now, and that, I think, is a distinction that's important to make.
I'll try to bring it back to the budget discussion and what we're talking about right there. What I've, what I've talked about for years, and what I've, I've brought up a number of times this year around debt service with the budget, and what we projected out for years, years ago, and certainly going into this year and going into this decade, and looking at the next several years, how this plays out, looking specifically at what we've taken on in debt, what our debt service payments are looking like, and the pressures that are certainly playing out, and have been playing out for the last several years. It's increasing once again, you know, this year, roughly somewhere between $500,000 this year, it looks like, we're projecting we're going to be doing a bond issuance this year, so, whatever the interest rate is, but roughly about another $500,000 next year. And it, that's what you sort of see, it could stabilize, but the importance of what we're talking about with Broad Street West, at least in the short term, is what we would get out of the land sale, I think, is really what I think about, and what it could do to offset municipal debt service payments in the coming years, until you get to 2027, when you see our scheduled debt service payments drop by over $1 million. It's really the next few years that I have concerns about the impact on the budget. I can't speak to what, how, Broad Street has no relevance in our budget this year. It's like it has no impact whatsoever, and next year, it will have no impact on our budget next year. As far as any costs go, that is something that I know you're talking about in terms of residential and the cost, I think that's a, that's a discussion for another day, we will address, but as far as this budget goes, I think just my immediate concern will be, how do we replenish the reserves that have been completely depleted over the last several years? And land sales and our asset sales have certainly helped us in the past, and it helps pay off, it's, it's used as a revenue source to offset any debt increases. That's my immediate concern, and it's been a concern for many years now. And so, I just, I think, just trying to not really get into that discussion more about what is a budget, a challenge every year, has been debt service and continues to be debt service, or anywhere we can try to, if we can, looking at assets and how we can, if it makes sense to sell, which in this case, we're contemplating that in the Broad Street West redevelopment area, and how we can offset the budget, the big budget, 800-pound gorilla, which is debt service, at least, that's one, but that's a major one over the coming years, and that's really what I'm hoping we can generate revenue. The pilot revenue is a different discussion, I think that's, you know, a future, many years, of how that can help the community and taxpayers. It's debt service in the, in the short term or medium term that I'm concerned about.
Okay. Are there, let's see, so I guess, Councilmember Miniger, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay. So, I, I just wanted to add something. I'd like to thank our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, our city administrator, Michael Rogers, and all the department heads, as well as the members of the capital projects and finance committees for their hard work on this budget. As folks have mentioned, this is a lengthy process, starting in the fall and continuing into the spring this year, so, each year. This year's budget was particularly challenging because of lost revenue from COVID, increased operating costs, and, and again, the mounting capital debt service, which is now the third largest category in our operating budget. This capital budget marks the first year that the city has paid off more debt than it has taken out, and this capital budget is the leanest in at least 15 years. It's not an accident that Summit has a AAA bond rating from all three credit agencies, it's the result of this kind of careful decision-making and responsible stewardship. It's the result of tough, making tough decisions to prioritize the services that our residents value. I thank our city staff for their dedication to providing the excellent services that preserve the high quality of life here in Summit. So with that, did you have anything else to add, Councilmember Vartan?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, so I think we'll close the hearing, and we'll move on to the next hearing, which is on the Special Improvement District, Councilmember Vartan.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. At our April 5 meeting, we adopted Resolution Number 40227, introducing the Special Improvement District budget, and establishing a hearing date, that is now. As was mentioned by representatives from Summit Downtown, Inc., revenue for SDI comes from the taxes collected from the Central Retail Business District, which is known as the downtown, and from the farmer's market and other events. So, the appropriations go toward primarily the marketing, advertising, events, and beautification in and of the downtown. I wish to thank the SDI board, of which I'm a part, and the professional staff for their commitment to our city, and I move to open the hearing.
I second it.
Okay, are there, I'm going to open this hearing, are there any comments from members of the public on this item? Yes?
Is there a comment? Would you like to ask, have a comment on asking about the tax situation that just went over as far as the Broad Street project?
No, we, we've moved on to the hearing, I had opened it up to the public, then the council spoke, so that hearing is closed. So, you know, we're going to be talking more about Broad Street West, I'm sure, during the public comment period, so if you have a Broad Street West, yes?
Oh, all right, okay.
So just sit tight, and we'll finish up the, this is about the Special Improvement District, or SDI, budget. So if anyone has a comment about that, come on up. And, okay, so I have no customers, all right, any members of council have a comment on that? All right, so I'm going to close the hearing on that, and we'll go ahead and do the final consideration of those two ordinances?
Resolutions.
Resolutions? Sorry, misspoke. All right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 9612. This resolution sets forth the summary of 2022 revenues and appropriations for the 2022 municipal operating budget, 2022 sewer utility operating budget, and 2022 parking utility operating budgets, as amended before. As we just had a hearing on this budget, I urge you all, my esteemed colleagues, to join me in supporting it. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, budget passes. And now, moving on to the SDI budget.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 9613. This resolution sets forth the summary of general revenues and appropriations for the 2022 Special Improvement District budget. As we just had a very brief hearing on this budget, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, so, roll call, please. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, budget passes, and we will now go on, go back to the public comments. So, this is now the time that I guess you guys have all been waiting for, so, I'd ask you to come up, please limit your comments to three minutes, we have a lot of people here, and we still haven't covered most of our, but, our meeting, so, please come up and state your name and, and address, and I'll, and we'll get started. Good evening, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Madam Council President, Mayor Gredeston absentia, and members of common council, I'm Jim Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, 38 Fairview Avenue, Summit. I start tonight's comments with a story about 47 Maple Street. 47 Maple Street is the large building on Maple Street where Union 47 Maple Street is the large building on Maple Street where Union Place dead ends into it at the railroad cut opposite the post office on the other side. My friend Richard Poole sat on the zoning board of adjustment a long time ago when the building at number 47 did not yet exist, but the five-story parking garage behind it did. Richard recently confirmed that the DRO at the time restricted building height in the area to four stories. The owner of number 47 wanted a fifth floor, but the zoning board turned him down. So the owner filed an action in lieu of prerogative writ in the Superior Court Law Division. The judge took a field trip to the top deck of the parking garage and asked, "How high are we here?" When he got his answer, he signed an order as quickly as he could return to his chambers to permit the owner of number 47 to have the fifth floor. The didactic point of this story is that non-conforming structures, such as the Springfield Avenue Maple Street parking garage, can erode municipal efforts to enforce more stringent standards in adjoining areas. It's just a small step to conclude that the structure proposed by L. M. Toll Brothers for the Broad Street West Subdistrict 3 will set a precedent for me-too developers. The recent town hall at Memorial Hall should indicate that Summit's residents eschew this development. I respectfully call on council to consider the precedent that the Broad Street West redevelopment project for Subdistrict 3 would pose as a call for its rejection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else want to come up? It's fine, you know, you can be ready to hop up when he's done. Good evening.
I didn't bring any extra papers. I was just jotting notes. My name is Bruce Thirkauf. I own 26 Maple Street in Summit. And I wanted to just comment a few things about that proposal. But before I do, on the pilot question, as far as the taxes were concerned for Broad Street.
Um, the questions have to come through me, sir.
Excuse me?
The questions have to come through me.
Yeah, on the, on the pilot program, is, does that have an end, and, an end time?
So we're going to-
Or is it for, for this project?
We're going to collect all the questions and then answer them all at once, because I think other-
I'm sorry?
We're going to get all the questions from the public, then we're going to answer them all at once.
All right, okay. I mean, you know, I've done commercial financing, and I, and I know in New York, pilot programs usually maybe have a 10-year or 20-year expiration date. On the pilot program, was there a comparison that was done between, if it didn't have a pilot program, what would the taxes be, you know, in comparison? And am I assuming that by sharing the profits, that the town can use 100% of the profits versus if it was regularly taxed, would they only be able to get 20% of the revenue? It's a question. Also on that is the retail. I think it's not a smart thing to do to add another 10,000 square feet of retail space and to compete with our existing tenants that have had a hard enough time during the pandemic. And the landlords, because they've had to support, in many cases, the tenants during this three-year period by lowering the rents, et cetera, you know, to keep them in, in, in business. On the proposal on Maple Street, I believe there was, there was some talk that there was a survey that was done. I'm a landlord. I, I don't recall ever receiving a survey. And I think, in my opinion, the landlord should have the most influence in deciding on any permanently proposed mall.
Sir, that's another topic. That's not for public comment. If you're talking about the pedestrian mall on Maple Street.
I thought you were talking about the SDI, you know, and-
No, no, we will, that's an item on the agenda. We have an ordinance that, and we're going to have a hearing on that, and you'll have an opportunity to talk about it.
Is there a hearing tonight on that too?
Yes.
Oh, all right, okay.
So just talk about your, you know, your other comments that are not on the agenda.
No, it's the other comments I have, you know, like, oh, yeah, all right. The comment on the Broad Street is, is we're, we're losing parking in the commuter lot. There's some talk that, you know, there's going to be some alternate use for the parking spaces in between the Y and the library. And we could be losing spots if there's a permanent mall on, on Maple Street. And we've had studies done in the past that have shown that we're probably, we need at least an additional 350 to 450 parking spaces. So you take away the commuter parking, you're under, way under, way under what the zoning is asking for as far as the parking is concerned. So, because they're saying that there's going to be so many spots, I don't know whether it's 129 in the, in the complex, and then there'll be additional spaces that people can use outside of the complex. Well, that's going to decrease the parking again. So your net result on parking with this Broad Street project is, very well could be that we're down 700, 800 parking spaces in town. I'd like to know how the, the council's going to address that.
Thank you, sir. All right, next comment?
Good evening. My name is David Cook. I'm at 160 Blackburn Road. That's Cook with an E. My wife and I have lived in Summit for over 40 years, and we've enjoyed living here. One of the things about Summit that we've always enjoyed is that although it is technically a city, it has always felt much more like a town. But now, our residents are facing the prospect with this development of something that's going to change that. We're looking at the prospect of a five-story, block-long building that both figuratively and literally is going to overshadow surrounding buildings and limit free and easy access to two structures in town that are very important to everybody, the Y and the library. These are problems that everybody knows about. There are a lot of issues that have yet to be fully explored, understood, and evaluated, such as, as the other gentleman before me mentioned, parking, traffic, and what are the real costs and benefits, if any, to Summit? As far as benefits are concerned, the only thing I have heard so far is what I call, and I don't mean to be disrespectful to anybody, vague promissory rhetoric. That's all I have heard. So for all these reasons, I, like very many of my fellow residents, cannot support this project. And I would respectfully ask everybody in city government to give serious consideration to what you really should do for the good of Summit. Let's keep Summit a town. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Guy Hazelman, Ruth of In Place, and I'm going to speak about Broad Street again. But I'm not going to go down the same arguments that you've all heard. I'll take a little bit of a different tact. And, but let me start with thanking you and your colleagues for showing up at the town hall, doing your due diligence, and watching the replay. I also had to watch the replay. I was unable to make it of that town hall meeting. I think it gave us a lot to think about, and the independent planner. And you commented on a few of those things. And I was, I'm happy to hear about the outreach that you talked about with the Y and the other, other groups. I think there's no reason why there can't be a lot of collaboration, and we're all on the same page. So it's good to hear that. And the collaboration with the residents. So this new town hall that you were talking about, I think, is really important because of your earlier comments. There seems to me, you said, "Oh, this is misinformation," or that you didn't have this right. This is an independent planner with an impeccable reputation that, according to you, may have gotten some things wrong. And I've been talking to a lot of residents who understand it one way. And then I talked to some of you, and I'm hearing a different story. So a town hall sounds absolutely fabulous. Let's all get on the same page. You know, I think for food for thought about the town hall, we had over 200 residents show up. And now we've had over 1,093 people sign a petition where they're against the existing project. And you talked about new ideas. And that's really what the town is asking for, that this, this big building, the way that it was, or the way they understand it, people say, "No, I don't want it. I want alternatives." And I'll just, two more things. There was one thing that happened to the town hall that I thought was really important. And that was when ex-council members Millie Cooper and Al Dill stood up. You know, and they made a comment about how they thought that building was not in the right character for Summit. And a lot of people agree with that. But one of the things they talked about was the argument that they were very much involved in, where there was a separate committee of council member and residents that got put together to talk about putting this building on the Village Green back in 1992, and I remember it well. And the people on that committee were absolutely, absolutely convinced they were right. That's where it belonged. I know people on that. And the reason that if you ask them now that they actually backed away was because so many residents were opposed to it. The residents got the attention of the council, and they backed away. And it wasn't until years later that a lot of them admitted, "Hey, I'm glad we did that." You know, we, that, that's not where it was, it belongs. And let me just tell a very quick story.
You're already at three minutes, so if you could just wrap up.
I'm already at it.
Yeah.
All right, well, let me conclude then.
That's perfect. Thank you.
And let me say this. I remember teaching my daughter about a sunk cost. And, you know, about how you don't make, you know, it's like a bad relationship, you know, you don't get, I put five years of my life into this. You guys put a lot of time and effort into this building. And I give you a lot of credit. I mean, you got, you know, and it was a lot of work. But you can get pretty close and attached to something. And I just hope that you guys remember what they did back in 1992 and take the will of the people, reevaluate, let's have a town hall, let's come up with an alternative on this. And then you'll have 1,093 heads, I think, are better than seven. And you'll have the 1,093 people working with you on the journey to that next proposal. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelman. All right, who's the next customer? Yeah, just please step up.
Hi.
Wait, wait till you get to the microphone, then state your name.
So my name is Anita Muzyka, M-U-Z-Y-K-A, and I'm at 118 Orchard Street. And I just want to say that I am, I highly oppose this project. This is my first council meeting. I did not come here at all in previous years, even though I've been living in Summit since 2003. And I just heard Ms. Beth Little just earlier before saying, "What are the alternatives that we have, you know, if we don't support this project?" And alternatives, I, from what I have lived here for, my taxes, every year, they don't go down. They always go up, every single year, unless I'm wrong. But since 2003, my taxes have gone up. The safety in Summit is not getting any better. It's getting actually worse. On Orchard Street, you can vouch to that, I'm sure. Sir, the, one car was stolen. There were guns drawn on Orchard and Broad Street.
Ms. Muzyka, you need to speak-
Just one and a half weeks ago.
Please don't turn around and speak to the chief.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, like I said, this is my first time. I'm a little bit nervous.
Don't be nervous.
And when I come here to, even to town, downtown, parking is terrible. So when we're talking about putting all these people in this building, parking is going to be a nightmare. There will be a lot of people, a lot of new problems, a lot of new things that we have to deal with. And I just want to say that I am totally opposing this project. So you could add me to 1,094 people, because I have never heard, I've never seen this survey that's out there. And I would love to sign it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next commenter?
Good evening. Hi, my name's Christine Meany. I live at 18 Fernwood Road, and I don't have anything prepared. But all that I want to say is, if you allow for this type of redevelopment, overdevelopment, you're going to turn Summit into the Oranges or Montclair. And I think that that's the best analogy. It's not Moorestown. It would be Montclair. And I don't think that anyone who lives here wants to live in Montclair, or they would. So I hope that you will reevaluate your decision. Because once you change the zoning, you're going to have a lot of developers coming in, and they're all going to develop on the train line, and you're going to completely change the town into one of those towns very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Fallon. I live at 92 Tulip Street, F-A-L-L-O-N. Counsel, I have two questions I hope you will answer tonight. The redevelopment plan under the town's master plan outlines the rules by which developers must adhere so Summit does not become overdeveloped and lose its historic character and charm. For the record, it is my opinion that the proposed Broad Street West redevelopment project is too large and does not fit the town's character and jeopardizes the charm that makes Summit a special place to live. The goal of the master plan is to, quote, "Keep new construction within the character of the town." My first question is, can each member of council honestly say that the proposed building on Broad Street conforms to the architecture, size, and character of the town? Another issue I have is transparency. I'm troubled with the lack of information with regard to pretty much any meaningful number related to this project. You say everything is on the FAQ page, but that is simply not true. Whether it's total height, length of the building, floors, total available acres you're using to set your total unit numbers, whether or not you're using St. Teresa's property for that calculation, your parking numbers are sketchy at best, and topology can't provide the math they're using for any of this. They just bully everyone and claim that we're stupid. The reality is, the public doesn't trust you or your numbers, or your, or do they trust topology? To be clear, you've misled the public when you say our taxes will rise substantially without this building. Yet by law, taxes can't be raised by more than 2%. Is 2% significant to you? Because it isn't when you're referring to the increase in traffic. This project has arguably zero economic benefit to our town. Your best-case scenario is that revenue will cover your municipal budget gap for a year or two, but will expose the Board of Education's budget, and by extension, its citizens, to unnecessary fiscal risks for future generations. Lastly, you've been told by several industry professionals who live in town that Toll Brothers would be, would still be wildly profitable paying $75,000 per land unit, especially with a pilot and without any significant environmental cleanup. Yet you're willing to take $57,000 per land unit, a difference of $2.5 million. Furthermore, it's been said that they would probably would make a sizable contribution for the relocation of the firehouse. So my second question is this: Are you planning to negotiate any further with Toll Brothers with regards to the number of floors, toll, total units, sale price of the land, and the compensation to move our firehouse? I ask that you reexamine the valid objections hundreds of Summit residents have already articulated. I ask that you do not force through a project that ignores the requirements set forth before you. This project is too large, and in its current form, I fear it will be a permanent stain on this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fallon? Mr. Fallon, could you please provide your written statement?
I'll have you have an email.
Email? Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, are there any other comments?
Good evening. Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street, here in Summit. Again, thanks to you all. I know the budget's really tough to do. You know, I have some experience, a little bit of experience in that, but I know it's very tough to do. I just have a couple of questions about Broad Street West. We talked about the pilot at last month's meeting, and I got a little bit of an education about what I didn't know about pilots. So I did a little research. And I simply typed up pilots in New Jersey, real estate pilots. And I found this, I found a report from, I believe, Kinnellon, New Jersey, where they outlined exactly how the pilot's going to work for the city or the borough, how much the school system's going to get, if they get anything at all, how much the town's going to get, how much they're going to give to the county. They also outlined the fact that the people who are doing a pilot or doing the development in Kinnellon through a pilot program still pay- in Kinnellon through a pilot program, still pay taxes on the land. Is that something that we're going to do in Summit? So then, as that money becomes a deductible expense the next year, which reduces the amount of money we're going to get? If I'm right or wrong, I don't know, but that's what I would think. So I also found out that there are some detriments to pilots. Who's going to do the audit? Is it going to be the City of Summit? Or are we going to hire an outside agency? I think that's important. Then we have to pay for the outside agency, or we rely on the employees of the City of Summit to do it. And then what's their expertise in that? Numbers can be artificially increased or decreased to reduce income, or increase income, and then write it off as an expense. Management expenses can be artificially increased. How do we keep track of all that? So there are some pitfalls to pilots. They're good in one aspect, they're bad in others. And I just certainly hope, and my question really is, that we go over all these, we do a study of the pilot, of how it's really going to benefit us. Yeah, we're going to get, I forget, $600,000. But if you just take the 24, I think it was 24 children that were supposed to be in this building, multiply, multiply that by the amount it costs to send them to school, it's well over $300,000 a year. And that's on the low end. Now, I know it's not a dollar-for-dollar for taxes, but let's say it's more than that. Let's say it's 35 kids. Now it's over $400,000. I don't know the exact what it costs to send a kid through school every year. I'm sure it's not cheap. But all that should be spelled out. Because at the end of the day, when I pay my property taxes, I pay the school. Whether the city gets the money from the pilot and it goes directly into their general fund, I still pay for additional kids in school. I don't mind paying, my kids went through school, but we need to know those numbers. We need to have a projection. And I don't, you know, if you can do 24, tell us how much that's going to cost us. Because one way or another, it comes out of everybody's pocket. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next comment?
Could I just ask one more question?
No, it's one, other people have, have an opportunity to speak first. We don't take, it's one comment per person, I'm sorry, that's the council rules.
Kevin McGoye, 113 Woodland Avenue. I just want to start off by saying, I think you guys need more help. I don't think topology is doing a very good job. I don't think topology is, I don't think they have the expertise that you need. I met with Nora and Andy Hindling from topology on Friday, and I tried to understand some of the numbers you're coming up with, or they're coming up with. And I realized that the, first of all, when you talk to them, they automatically assume that it's going to be 55 per acre, 55 units instead of 45. They just immediately assume that we provided an extra 10 units per acre for, as an incentive for extraordinary infrastructure costs, which I asked last meeting, still don't know what they are, I don't think they exist. So we immediately go to 55. To understand, this land before the redevelopment rezoned it, was zoned at 30 units per acre. So the 45 units is a 50% increase over what it was to begin with. When you look at the other sub-districts in this redevelopment plan, Subdistrict 2 is 30 units per acre, and Subdistrict 4 is 40 units per acre. So 45 units per acre is actually a generous amount to begin with. Immediately giving them 55 is, I think, troubling without them actually doing something. I went through this exercise, you know, because if you give 55 for the 1.6 acres that is being sold, you come up with 88 units. And Annie insisted it was 105. To get to 105, she explained to me that you're using the acreage for St. Teresa's Memorial Hall in that calculation. Although the builder's not buying it, I guess there's some way through redevelopment where if they do some improvements to the property of St. Teresa's, it will be included into, included into the acreage for the calculation. It's 100% true. This is what they're doing. That's where the 105 number comes from that they're talking about. So then I asked Annie, okay, well, where does 140 come from? How do you get, if it's 105, and I give you the St. Teresa's thing, how do you get to 140? And she said, well, if we did the entire project, if we included the, the insurance building, and we included the funeral home, which are not in the redevelopment site, we would have been able to do 155 on this property. So we came up with 140. So ignoring how you get to the zoning, we just came up with 140. So I said, well, how do you justify that? And she said, well, to get the city the money they need. So it's not a function of zoning. I can prove what she said. Believe me. I can read what she said, you know. So it troubles me that this is, the entire project at this point, the scale, the mass, and everything is being driven purely by finances. Then I asked Nora, well, Nora, what do you need? Do you even know, do you have a detailed projection of where the holes are in the budget? Michael, you just said that really, we're not going to get anything from this in 2023, 2024. So you're really, and then 2027, the, the interest cost comes down $1 million. So you're really talking about a three-year gap, right? And it's all the sale proceeds, that's it. That's really all you need. So you're going to stick that into a reserve fund that you can use to bridge gaps to not make difficult decisions. I think that, and Beth Little said this, you're going to get sale proceeds if you do this under and adhere to the redevelopment plan. You'll get sales proceeds. There'll probably be enough to bridge that gap anyway. And then you'll get revenues after that. And like you said, Bristol Myers Squibb, there's other revenue sources that come on. So I think you guys need, I think you guys need serious help on the financial side of it. The other thing that was troubling is, there were no other bids for this. There were no other bids for this.
You're done, Mr. McGoye, that's not how the process works, and you're done. No, I'm cutting him off because he's now at four minutes, and we've got a whole room full of people who are waiting. I'm sorry, but you know what, there are a whole room full of people, that's the council rules. And he's done this every single meeting where he goes beyond three minutes. So come on up, next person. It's, you know, this is only fair, this is the council rules, it's three minutes, that's what it is. You know, it's already nine o'clock, so I'm asking, if anyone else has comments, please
Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street. And I just have a couple of questions and points of clarification. So topology referenced 68 redesigns for transparency purposes, are any of those revisions going to be published to the city's website so that all residents can see the evolution of the process and how feedback inconformity was taken into consideration as these plans progressed? Both the mayor and council president have now referenced stakeholder feedback multiple times. The only feedbacks from stakeholders that the residents of Summit have seen are from the HBC. Those were up, they were down, and now their backup redacted. It's previously been stated that feedback from other stakeholders is not available. Are there plans to eventually make it available? Topology also said that the length of the building stated at Wednesday's town hall meeting, 480 feet, was misleading and inaccurate, but then went on to exclude a section of the building from the measurement on the schematic. Do you know why the full length of the building isn't being explicitly communicated by topology? It is 480 feet long, and this is based on the opred architectural plans. And then finally, I'm just wondering what the parking revenue is through April, since you said you were looking at the numbers before. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment?
Good evening. Eileen Kelly, 47, Woodland Avenue. Appreciate that three minutes is really helpful in this scenario, because I think we also all want to get home as well. But I would like to correct the record from Councilwoman Fox's opening statement about misinformation from the town hall last week. First, the definition of misinformation is false or inaccurate information, especially which is deliberately intended to deceive. I think the idea that the council would accuse the residents who organized that town hall of misinformation is disheartening. Over 1,000 residents have now signed that petition for alternate designs for Broad Street West, and the spirit of the town hall was to educate the public with facts and expertise. Councilwoman Fox stated in her first point that the planner, Carlos Rodriguez, stated that the project wasn't thoughtful. A planner's opinion, and for added background, Carlos Rodriguez was honored, was honored as a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners. He is a past president of the American Planning Association of New Jersey, and a board member of the Society for American City and Regional Planning History. His opinion is one we should be lucky to have against the 60-plus designs that the developer and its, and its developed, excuse me, and its hired architect have thus, has probably presented. His opinion is also not misinformation. Secondly, it was mentioned that the planner stated the sewers can handle this project. This is completely false. The town hall, for everyone's reference, is recorded. And for your reference, at minute 42 and 45 seconds, the planner specifically says, I did not investigate the condition of the city sewers. I just wanted to clarify these two points, because I do think it's important that a lot of good information was shared at the town hall, and I would look forward to the additional town hall coming up. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, I am Ruth McPherson, and I have lived in Short Hills, Chatham, and Summit for almost 80 years. And Summit has always been looked on as being a wonderful place and a great place to come to. And I am so upset by that building that seems so large, much too large, and very, very unattractive. And I just had to come up here and say what I had to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on up.
Thank you, Council President Fox, Fred Honold, H-O-N-O-L-D, 133 Summit Avenue. It seems like we have two possible scenarios here. Either council can go full speed ahead with a declaration on Broad Street West in one of the meetings in May, and then vote it on June, game over, move on. That's one possibility. Another possibility, because there seems like there's a lot of questions in town, is to have a conversation in town. One thing that has differentiated Summit over the decades and centuries is that conversations are engaged in. So I want to know, Council President Fox, I'm very encouraged by your comments on April 19th. About one hour, 20 minutes into it, you said February 9th meeting was interim report. This isn't the final product. We are not signing this, I'm assuming the LOI, until we feel that this process, that this project is adequately part. We're going to take as long as it takes to get it right, so please keep the dialogue going. Then I did a little more reading and research, and back on October 19th, 2017, it was written as follows in Tap into Summit. I will communicate with Summit residents and make sure that their views are represented on council. Too often, residents find out about decisions after council has already voted. We need to make council more open and responsive and make sure that residents have the opportunity to comment before votes are taken. Council should represent the views of Summit residents rather than making decisions without their input. This particular individual made two other points. Summit has a deficit in available parking downtown during peak hours. Third point, finally, redevelopment on the Broad Street corridor offers an excellent opportunity to increase parking. Those comments were written comments by then-council candidate Marjorie Fox. And so it's out there in the public, so I thank you for that, and it's the consistency test. You wrote it then, and on April 19th, you talked about having a town hall meeting. But it raises the question, how do we think of a town hall meeting? We didn't elect LNM and Toll, but we did elect you, we elected the mayor, we elected the at-large candidate. So in a town hall meeting, why don't you get up and talk to the residents? We have an expert here in redevelopment. Morristown City Admin, apparently has generated in redevelopment $500 million with a redevelopment. Prior to that, was a lawyer clerk, dealt with a lot of developers. So all this expertise, I think what people are saying is educate us. If you really believe in this, educate us and share the information. You said you've been working this since 2017, 2018? A lot of expertise right behind the dais. So why don't you educate us on what's going on with facts and figures? So by way of final thought, why don't you think in the second quarter of you, the mayor, and the at-large council member, Little, you're all lawyers, getting up and prove your case to town. Talk about it in a town meeting. Have it wherever else you want there, but you three be front and center stage. How about in the third quarter, you get a couple of council members, maybe the candidates for Summit, and you have in September, then talk to people and educate. And we're getting close to the three-minute rule.
We are past.
So I thank you for that.
Please wrap up.
But it also says, Council President, your books, may limit comments to three minutes. So it's your choice as to latitude. But the final thought is then have the vote in the fourth quarter. And I would say, what do you have to lose, except the good faith and goodwill and confidence of the people in public? One final thought?
We're at three minutes thirty, so make it quick.
Okay. And the final thought is this, at the last meeting, I asked you about your office hours, and you said you don't have an office. It's a pretty big building we have here, I would think there's temporary space.
Mr. Honold, I did say that I would meet with you if you contacted me, and I hold to that.
The mayor is bold and courageous in terms of registered office hours. Why don't you think about having published office hours, and we can stop by and talk? And that's a suggestion. And I knew in Summit there's a parking problem, I hope there's not an office space problem. And if you had a place that you chose, publish your times, we can come by and talk to you. Summit has a lot of goodwill.
All right, I think now we're, we're now well past four minutes, please stop.
So one final thought, because of all this time.
No, no, not one final thought. Mr. Honold, you're done.
Because of all this time constraint, have a town hall meeting, show up and talk to us. Thank you.
Okay, and the next person?
Hello, my name's Paul Deehan. I reside at 61 Wallace Road Summit, D-E-E-H-A-N. And I'm just observing the process, and I haven't been very involved in it, so I'm just reading papers and everything else that's coming out on it. I'm just a little puzzled, it seems like the tax tail is wagging the dog. And that's not a great, great way to do planning. I'm startled at the price of the property. Have there been any market analysis on the value of the property? Because we have houses going for $4 million. So how can we possibly sell this and finance it? Give them financing? That makes no sense. Parking, everyone knows we're underparked, tremendously underparked. I can also say that this development would never have been contemplated under prior master plans. I know I chaired the planning board for many years and wrote two master plans with that board. So this project would not have been contemplated under that plan. Finally, having served on planning for many years, one thing I learned is to listen to the experts. And we now have a qualified expert who's diametrically opposed to a lot of the components of the plan. And I think it's incumbent that we listen to those actual planning lessons from him and make this a better project, because we can clearly do that. It's too big, it's underparked. I'll give you one example. The building across from the connection, they came to us and they wanted to, they said they didn't need any parking, and their parking people were not credible. So we kind of deal with them, we said, okay, you have that piece of property next to you, we're going to make that a land bank. If we can't park the property, then you're going to build a parking lot. And they agreed to that. And sure enough, the conflicts between their parking and the connection was overwhelming, they built a parking lot, and that was a win-win. So you only get one shot at this. The applicant does not have an entitlement, they don't own the property, the city does, and you have to be the stewards of this project. You're representing the city, you're representing us as taxpayers. So since you only have one shot, if you screw up the parking, you screw up the density, then we're all going to suffer for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next comment?
Councilperson Fox, is this the proper time for the pedestrian mall?
No.
Thank you.
That's on the agenda, so we'll, we'll let you know when we're there. Sure.
Simple question, so something on capital projects?
Please state your name and address.
Allison Chiefo, 34 Laurel Avenue, C-H-I-E-F-F-O. I have a question about a capital project and community services, that, it's something that's being awarded a bid? Can I speak about that now?
Yeah, no, that's, what we're doing now is public comment.
Okay, I have a public comment also.
Okay. So can you just explain the rule to everyone, and then we'll get you started, okay? So the rule is, we're taking public comments on items that are not on the agenda. So if it's something on the agenda, I'd ask you to hold it, to hold your comments on that until we get to that agenda item. Does that clear up the confusion for folks?
Okay. I just, I don't have, I don't have much to say about Broad Street West redevelopment, except I'm very opposed to it. I think we've had a lot of comments here. And I, it's, what's interesting, I'm still waiting for somebody to stand at this podium and talk about the benefits of it, because we've only heard the benefits from the dais, we haven't heard anybody We haven't heard anybody here yet, so I don't know if I'm missing something. Additionally, I've been to every meeting except for the Zoom meeting that was held during 2020. I'm welcoming that town hall meeting. And somebody had mentioned before, summer is coming. This is, it's May third. When is that town hall meeting? We cannot have it in the middle of July, middle of August, when the town empties out. School's going to be out next month. When is this, if time is of the essence, we need to have this town hall meeting now. And like I said, we need to have, you talk to us, we need to have our own time. That workshop that was done at the community center, that wasn't a workshop, that was them telling us, and then we got timed out, and they ran out of time. We need to have this town hall meeting, that you, we deserve it. The residents need to have this, and we need to have it on the calendar. There's no reason that we should be waiting for it. Is there a reason why we don't have it now? I mean, we have the calendar probably for the rest of the year.
We're waiting to get, to get
But can you give us a month?
No, I cannot give you a month, but I can tell you that it will not be over July and August. We will not do anything over the summer when people are away.
It's going to be June twenty-eighth. I mean, we just have to, you can't
I can't tell you that till we get the information.
How much advance notice is this community going to have? Because we have a lot to make sure everybody, we're going out
We recognize that. We're all busy, we recognize that, Ms. Chieffo. Okay, just give us the time to get the information, and once we get the information, we will get it out to you, and we will give you notice.
Okay. I just want to also tell you about my, this past weekend, last, the weekend before, I spent an hour and a half at the farmer's market, talking about the citizens' town hall meeting. Nobody knows about Broad Street West. People might have heard about it, they didn't know anything about it. And you know something? It's not my job to be educating the residents of this town. I don't understand. We don't have a town newspaper. The information is not getting out there. It's being hidden. And like I said, I'm standing at town hall. Get it, if this, if STI, the city is part of STI, get a table, put up a sign, educate everybody, because if you want people that are on your side and that are for this project, maybe that's the only way to do it. But I, I'm sitting here, like I said, I'm at, I'm at the farmer's market for an hour and a half, and I'll be doing it throughout the fall to make sure that everybody in this town knows what's going on, because this is not, this is being hidden, and enough people don't know what's going on, and I think it's a disgrace.
Okay, next comment, please. Are there any other people who want to comment? Good evening, Ms. Gagnon.
Hi, Dori Gagnon, twenty-seven Bedford Road. Ms. Lagattis, since I'm here, you can, don't have to read mine. So I had prepared something, because I didn't know if I was going to make it, so. Good evening, mayor and council members. I want to thank those who came out to our town hall meeting last week and took the time to listen to our residents of Summit-funded planner, Carlos Rodriguez. I hope you take the time to consider redesigning Sub District Three. It was evident that night that the current design of Sub District Three is not what the majority of Summit is in favor for. So I have a few questions regarding the project, I hope you'll be able to answer, and a few questions off Broad Street West as well. Carlos Rodriguez stated that the total length of the building on Broad Street is four hundred and eighty feet. Topology, the architectural firm that the city hired, I believed, or, so my question is, did the city hire these experts, or did L&amp;M and Toll hire the experts? So that was one question. So, so, back to that. Carlos said the total length of the building is four hundred and eighty feet. Topology responded in a Tap article by saying it was three hundred and forty-six feet on Broad Street and sixty-two feet on Broad Street, and then the bend, which equals four hundred and eight feet. However, there's a huge missing piece of the building in between. So I don't understand why that piece of the building is intentionally left out. So we're constantly asking what the total length of the building is, and that was Topology's answer as well, and people have mentioned that before. The people of Summit would like to know what the total length of the building is and why it's not included. Can you please provide that length of the building? And also the length of the building on the Morris Avenue side, that's not included on your questions and answers on the website. Mr. Rodriguez pointed out that the green space calculated was part of St. Teresa's Memorial Hall. When looking at the pictures provided on the City of Summit website, the lines do look, in fact, like they're touching the back of Memorial Hall. Can you explain to the town about the green space issued by Mr. Rodriguez, and if, in fact, that is part of Memorial Hall, or if that is part of the city? And lastly, I asked specific questions at the council meeting last time about the commuter lot, and I haven't heard an answer about that. So it was about the parking on the commuter lot, and I have not heard an answer, so I've been waiting on that. I don't know if I'm going to get a response on that, and I just actually have a couple more questions. Do you charge businesses for parklets when they ask to use a parklet? And do you charge businesses for the closure of Maple Street, when that's closed off? And I asked about the Toll, L&amp;M and Toll brothers, if they are paid, if the experts are paid by them, so I think that's it. So those are my questions. But if I could get an answer about the commuter lot and all those questions I had
Remind me what the question is, Ms. Gagnon.
There were a lot of them. I don't have them written on here.
Okay, we can go back and find them.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, it was specifically if that is going to be used as, how many, what the revenues were for several years, if it's going to be used as a commuter lot again. I know that there was valet service, if there was valet service
You're talking about Broad Street, the Broad Street Garage.
The Broad Street commuter lot, correct. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Council president, yes. We have
Okay, so I'm going to close the, from the people here.
From the in-person?
Yes. And we're going to go to the written, to the written ones.
Okay. There were several emails received. I'm going to list the names of those people who, who had similar comments.
Maybe it's better if I get these done first.
Do you want to answer?
Sure.
Sure.
So I had, so we had a few questions that I'm, I'm going to answer now. Bruce Thirkoff, I'm sorry if I'm butchering your name, but you had asked about the pilot. So the pilot is a third, would be a thirty-year pilot. We have done comparisons between what the taxes, what it would be with traditional taxes versus
Taxes to, who was a regular
Yes. Okay, you know what? I can answer them, so just let me get through it, okay, please? So you can, actually, our expert, Bob Powell, did a presentation and explained all that. You can see a video of his presentation and learn everything you want to know about the project finances and the pilot there. And he talked about, and he had a chart with, he did have a chart, you can also see that on our city's website, and it compares the two, so you can see the, the numbers. The city can, you asked about whether the city can use all of the profits, not twenty percent, so it's ninety-five, but in the pilot, it's ninety-five percent for the city, five percent for the county. If it's just traditional taxes, it's twenty percent.
Well, I guess in that, it would be comparison.
Sir, sir, the
Sir, we're not doing that. You asked your questions, I'm answering them now.
But, sir, you can't have a back-and-forth dialogue.
It's not allowed.
It's not allowed.
Okay. And the, the other question was about replacing parking, and one of the, one of the things that we will be doing is the long-term parking solution will be on Sub District One, and we'll be coming back to you, when we, when we come back at the town hall, we will talk more about that and how that'll work. So We have to wait, we're waiting for the redevelopers to come back to us. We gave them comments, gave them, you know, and passed along the feedback we've gotten from the public, and we are now waiting for them to come back with, they, they indicated that they would make changes to the project, and we're waiting to see what they come back with.
Is the public, are you going to have another meeting, or the public will be able to also ask some official questions after they come back with their recommendation?
We are going to have a meeting, we're going to have a public meeting. And I can't give you a date until I know when we're, we have, you know, once we get that information, we have a process, you know, of vetting it with other council members as well, and our steering committee, before we go out to the public. So it's going to take, you know, a little bit of time to get that done. I don't know how long, because I don't know, you know, we're, it's not under our control at this point. But I, I can assure you, we will not vote on anything before there's another town hall and another opportunity for the public. And that's
I'm just going to ask a question.
No, you're not going to ask a question. This is not how it works. I'm sorry. Okay, so, let's see. I'm just looking to see what other questions there were. Who does the pilot audit? Michael, do you?
The city would hire, it's similar to what we do for our own municipal finances. There'll be a, there'll be an auditor, an independent auditor that conducts that audit.
And it's, and you don't really have to worry about them, about, it's the top-line number, so it's really what comes
They'll evaluate what the, what the required information that the developers would have to give based on, you know, what their, their operating, basically their income statement, going, going through that, and other things that, in order to, to conduct a proper audit of what it is, there's probably a lot, other documentation that you have to provide in order to, to see what the, some of the concerns about some, some of the management fees and so forth, you have to kind of dig in and just compare whether they're reasonable costs that they're charging. So that's what the, that's the responsibility audit. Mr. Nelson's correct, and it will be done, just like we have our own finances evaluated by an independent auditor, so.
Right. Okay, thanks. So as far as the conversations that Mr. Magoi had about the number of units, I, I would have to just, I would have to defer that to, to Topology, because I don't know the substance of the conversation that was had. We are still negotiating with the redevelopers, and, you know, nothing is final on this. We're, you know, we've asked them to go back and, and make changes, so, you know, let's, before we talk about, you know, how many units and all of that, let's see what they come back with. As far as, let's see, did the city hire Topology and the other experts? Ms. Gagnon asked. The answer is that we have hired our experts, and there is a provision in the, in the document where we designate, conditionally designate the redeveloper, that provides that the developer will create an escrow account, and so the escrow account pays for the redevelop, the, the city's professionals. So we hire them, they, they represent us, but they are paid, their, their fees are paid out of that escrow account. And as far as the total length of the building, again, that's one that I'm going to have to defer to Topology, because I can't explain the methodology. And, okay, and that, so that covers all the answers, so go ahead.
Okay. So there were a total, let me see, of fifteen, seventeen public comments that I was able to accept, and many of them are similar, so I'll summarize those, but there were two in particular that were not similar, and I'd like just to read those first. The first one was from Fred Blough of fifty-nine Woodland Avenue, and he writes, "The Broad Street West Development Project includes many buildings. As buildings last one hundred years or more, long-term planning of buildings is critical. Mistakes and oversights can be very costly. Buildings in the U.S. consume thirty-nine percent of total energy, but in New Jersey, they consume fifty-three percent of total energy. Today, most energy for heating is supplied by natural gas, fossil fuel. But by 2050, just twenty-eight years from now, due to the climate crisis and plans to achieve net-zero greenhouse gas emissions, heating and cooling is expected to be by heat pumps, which run on electricity. The best heat pumps are geothermal heat pumps, also called ground-source heat pumps. They're initially more, more costly than air-source heat pumps, but they are more efficient, continue to work in very cold weather, and save money over the long term. Geothermal heat pumps are more difficult to retrofit, so the best time to install them is when new buildings are constructed. Therefore, I make the following recommendation. Broad Street West Design should include expert evaluation of geothermal heat pumps for heating and cooling of buildings."
Okay.
The next comment is from Cynthia Welton of Drumhill Drive, and she writes, "I understand there is a revenue shortfall in Summit, and we need ways to close the gap between revenue and costs, hence this new building project. But I am curious if our elected officials have also proposed options that reduce the cost side of equation, of the equation. This would mean cutting items out of our budget, of course, but the tax-paying residents of our community should have input in deciding if we would consider, consider budget cuts in exchange for a smaller-scale project. In summary, Summit's financial problems have both revenue and cost components, but so far, the common council has focused primarily on how to generate revenue and not focus as much on where we can cut costs. Can you discuss some of the ways we could cut costs to close our budget gap? This may alleviate the need for such a large-scale construction project." The other fifteen, I'll just read their names and then summarize what they said. Allison Leba, DeBarry Place, Tony Crowe, Passaic Avenue, John Miano, one oh one, one oh three Park Avenue, Joan Kelly, Ramsey Drive, Kenneth Kenny, Kelly, Ramsey Drive, Peter and Ann Engelhardt, Oakland Place, Michael Dugan, eighteen Hughes Place, Natalia Christensen, Whitridge Road, Renee Kelly, Rotary Lane, Susan Lemko, New England Ave., Carol Pally, Linda Lane, Floyd Donahue, Templar Way, Corinne Kelly, Oakland Place, Sue Roberts, Oakland Place, and Kristen Lumalo, Fernwood Road. The last three had questions.
Okay.
So I'll read those last, but to summarize, they expressed concerns about the size, scale, height, and density of the proposed building, the impact on schools and traffic flow, they had parking concerns, conformance with the master plan, and asked that council should reconsider the design. The questions were
Do you want to read them, or do you want me to?
Yeah, maybe it's easier.
Yeah.
Then I don't have to remember.
Right.
Okay. All right. So there was, there were questions about the specific guidelines for applicants with regard to important affordable housing aspect of this project. Is it limited to Summit residents or open to all New Jersey residents? Unfortunately, when we do, you know, with affordable housing, we are obligated to open up our affordable housing to, I believe it's anyone in, is it regional, or is it just this, Michael, is it, is it, it's statewide, or is it regional? I know we don't get to restrict it to Summit residents.
Yeah, you have to advertise it in regional papers, and it's not restricted, though.
But it's not, but we don't, yes, so anyone can, can sign up. So that's, you know, we would like to offer it to Summit residents, and in fact, we didn't take credit for the affordable housing at, at twelve Chestnut, because for the senior housing there, we have restricted it to Summit residents, and as a result, we were not allowed to count that towards our affordable housing goal. But we felt it was very important to keep, you know, to, to provide housing for our seniors. So it's just unfortunately the way the law is written. Then the next question was, when we are all experiencing five-dollar gas and plastic bag bans, to work towards a greener environment, why is there not one ounce of green technology being implemented with this project? And that is actually not correct. We've been told that there will be a solar installation on this project. There is also, they're doing a lot of energy efficiency work. I'm not sure that there'll be a, there will not be a LEED certification, but there may be a smart, a smart energy or some other kind of certification. And they, the landscaping is native plants, it's, a lot of what you see with the landscaping is bio swales to handle the stormwater. So in fact, the stormwater handling will be much better than what we have now, because they will handle all their water on-site, and it will also be attractive. And, you know, right now, what we've got is a big paved area with lots of runoff, so this is, that will actually be a big improvement. I'm sure I'm forgetting some other, some other environmental things, but there are quite a number. EV charging stations, bike racks, things like that. So there's a lot that's in there, and that's something at the town hall where we can spend more time talking about that. The next question was, has been asked and answered about the number of units, and I'm going to turn that over to Topology, and also the number of parking spots in the Topology memo. So again, that's one we'll have to wait on. What is the proposed size of the sidewalk along Broad Street? Will it be big enough to accommodate outdoor seating, or will the parking spaces on Broad Street need to be taken away during the warm months? There will not be, as far as I know, there will not be, there's not any plan to do parklets, because the area that has the retail is actually, has a plaza area, and there will be plenty of space for outdoor seating throughout. The sidewalks are actually quite broad along this area, so I don't think there'll be any need for this additional seating. So I think that covers, oh, one last question. How can this next phase of tiered, of tiered parking garage not be considered at the same time as this phase? So we will be talking about that as well in the town hall. So I think that covers everything.
Yep.
Okay. So with that, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move on to the main event of the evening, which is the agenda. So let's see where we are.
So let's see where we are. Okay, we've got an ordinance for hearing, which is capital projects. Councilmember.
I should read.
Oh, what?
Sorry.
You should read. I'm like, I'm like full speed ahead.
This would be ordinance number 22-3255, an ordinance establishing a pedestrian mall pursuant to NJSA 40:56-65 at SEC in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Okay. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance that was introduced on April 19th to establish a pedestrian mall on Maple Street between Union Place and Springfield Avenue and Springfield Avenue and DeForest Avenue. To the delight of many people, Maple Street has been closed to vehicular traffic for portions of the last two years. The Maple Street closure has been a great benefit to the city and our downtown businesses, and has the support of SDI. And this governing body has demonstrated by a unanimous vote at the February 15th council meeting. The goal of closing Maple Street is the same as the last two years, but the path this year is to establish a pedestrian mall in both locations. Everything will work the same as in years past, and this ordinance will come to an end on November 30th, 2022. As always, the city reserves the right to have any temporary seating or uses removed within these areas during the ordinance period. I now move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Hello, sorry.
The hearing is open.
Council President.
Yes.
Thank you. I support the closure of Maple Street through November 30th. It's extremely disappointing that the state wouldn't approve of the closure the council adopted in February. I support this measure we're taking tonight, because it's the simplest path toward achieving that original objective. Restaurants and other businesses benefit from this closure. SDI, the group representing downtown businesses, is supportive of the measure. Residents are supportive of the measure, and I think it's the right thing to do. As a reminder, SDI has committed funds to bringing in an expert on placemaking to run focus groups, surveys, engage stakeholders, and make potential recommendations on whether a more permanent closure of Maple Street makes sense. But for now, I think this year, again, we should close until November 30th. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from members of council? Oh, Councilwoman Brown, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. So I just wanted to say I do support the closure this year. I spoke with Councilwoman Sullivan, just to clarify what she said in his opener, but that this is not a pathway to permanent closure, that this is very specific to ensuring that we can have outdoor dining. That has been popular, and so I just wanted to put that out on the record that I'm clearly in support of tonight and closing this area as a pedestrian mall for this year. So I hope that we will revisit this next year and make sure that if it is a permanent closure, that is a fully, obviously transparent process with the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown, and that is the plan. And the first step toward a permanent, if we were to do a permanent closure, would be this outreach that's being done by the consultant. So we have, you know, there's a lot of work that has to be done before we get to the point of even considering that. So are there any other comments from members of council? Okay, comments from members of the public? This is your time, sir.
Thank you, council. My name is Rich Callahan. I'm representing the Summit Elks Lodge, number 1246 on 40 Maple Street. I'm one of the trustees. I'm a lifelong resident, area resident, so I'm very familiar with it. Just a little bit of background about the Summit Elks, so that you know the magnitude of our lodge. We currently have 2,500 members, approximately two-thirds residing in Summit. We have owned the building. We own 40 Maple Street. We have a wonderful tenant, Fiorino's, who hopefully has benefited from the prior two years closures. My concern, our concern as the lodge is the access to the lodge, both our daily access and further capital projects that we might have to do on the lodge, such as removing HVAC units, repairing the roof, which would require a road closure and a crane, as it has in the year past. So my, my understanding from this meeting is that the configuration of the Maple Street closure will be as it were, was in the past prior years. Would that be a correct statement? So the issue that we have is deliveries of, daily deliveries of liquor and beer, parties. We run probably 150 events for the community. Our lodge is a magnet for our members to come to visit and patronize all the restaurants and shops in downtown Summit. So I look forward to having access to our building, both in the front and possibly in the back. And I thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Allison Chiefo, 34 Laurel Avenue. I want to talk about the the closing of Maple Street. Although everyone says that a lot of the residents are for this closing, I happen to not be for it. It's one thing if it's seasonal, but closing from May to November is not a season. That's a really long period of time. It's a thorough street that I use to get to my house. I live a couple blocks off of Maple, and I find it a big inconvenience. I don't think that closing, there are other streets in town. I know years ago, we spoke about Beechwood being closed. That would make more sense. I mean, Maple Street's a main artery, and to close it during most of the year is, I think, is just, like I said, an inconvenient. Close it during July and August, when the city is quiet, and that'd be great. But I really think those things need to be considered. And I think if, maybe if we put out a survey, I mean, we're in the electronic age. I would love to see surveys from the city. I would love for the city to reach out to the to the community. And by the way, not just electronically. We have a lot of people in this town that don't use electronics, that don't, that aren't on the internet, I mean, are on social media. So just think about that. When you think about, maybe have a newsletter, so that residents in town can come and pick something up at City Hall to know what's going on. There's, you know, let's be transparent. Let's get the news out to everybody. And let's not limit to other people not being able to get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lori Combius. I am a third generation Summit resident, and I live on Maple Street, in downtown Maple Street, at 44 Maple Street. And I love eating out at the restaurants in Summit, but it is so inconvenient for us to have that street closed. And it was an eyesore this summer, with all of the orange cones and the orange barricades. Everywhere, it looked like Maple Street was under construction. And I look out my window, and I see this, and it is really disturbing. There, and if you're going to close the street temporarily for the summer, then there has to be a better way to make it look more attractive. And on another note, I know that it benefits the restaurants. Don't get me wrong, I love the restaurants, but it doesn't really help the businesses, especially on Maple Street. I had a retail store on Maple Street for 18 years, and I would have to say that a lot of my customers would drive by, and they would notice my store, and they would come back there to shop. So the stores that are there now aren't getting, will not be getting that drive-by traffic if the street is closed permanently. I know that my tenant is not in favor of closing the street permanently, and I worry about future tenants that I may get that would not want to rent my space because of access to the front door. As it is, the traffic in town is ridiculous. A lot of people are working from home, and there is a lot more traffic. And the parking is ridiculous as well. So why would you even think about closing a main artery in downtown Summit, taking away parking spaces and creating even more traffic in town? The summer months is one thing, and it's lovely for the residents, but a permanent mall on Maple Street, I just think it's a terrible idea.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi. Janie Racklin, 29 Maple Street. Like Lori, I'm a third generation Summit inhabitant. My family has been in Summit since 1906, in retail on Maple Street for 107 years, and now is a landlord for the last eight years. I feel the potential closure of our street benefits only a few businesses rather than the whole neighborhood. In the planning of this, no one reached out to me for my opinion, which is that it reeks of favoritism. Some of my questions are, you did speak about this earlier. Does this plan call for permanent closing or temporary closing, and what is temporary closing? What do you expect will happen to the additional traffic on Summit Avenue, the only remaining thoroughfare through town? How will you set up tables for restaurant diners to coexist with meandering pedestrians and waiters balancing trays of food and drinks? What plan will be in effect if a building needs maintenance or repairs that require large vehicles, trucks, or dumpsters, et cetera? And most importantly, have you considered the additional response time for emergency vehicles to service Maple Street when they cannot reach a location as quickly as needed? Years ago, the town widened the sidewalks, added trees and planters with the intention of becoming more pedestrian friendly. I do not believe that turning Maple Street, a major thoroughfare, into a pedestrian mall will benefit anyone other than the few pushing for it. I am against this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Council President Fox. Fred Honold, H-O-N-O-L-D, still at 133 Summit Avenue since I last spoke.
That's a relief.
Haven't moved since. Quick question. The restaurants in town, and I think it's a great idea, it adds to the town. They move out onto the sidewalks and onto the streets. So the question is, I believe the way businesses in town are taxed is based on square footage. So now that they're occupying sidewalks and streets, is there some sort of fee or tax based on that? And if so, who measures it? How do you measure it? And the final thought is, is that taxed the same as inside their building? Or is there a different tax if they're out on the sidewalk and street? So any insight you can provide on that would be welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Thirkauf. I own the building at 26 Maple Street in Summit. I just heard this gentleman over here, I guess it's Greg, mention that, yeah, the residents are for this, the SDI is for this project, et cetera, et cetera. I don't remember any survey going out to the town as far as closing the mall or making this a pedestrian mall. And if a survey were to go out, I think there should be some background and comments on the pros and cons. The landlords on this street should really have the most say in this decision. We're the ones that pay the taxes. We're the ones that pay the insurance. We maintain our properties. We make the repairs on our properties. And you're going to limit the access of deliveries, just like Ms. Racklin mentioned. You're going to complicate the emergency access. There's propane tanks out there, which creates a hazard. And I've seen them in the off-season lined up against buildings in alleyways. It's just waiting for something to happen. Could this, could putting a pedestrian mall devalue my property? If so, who's going to, who's going to compensate me for the difference in value? In my estimation, this is a form of eminent domain without due process. I understand that the Summit owns the streets, but, you know, this is, that street has been there for more than 150 years. My, my father, I've been a resident here in Summit for resident and or ownership of property for over 75 years. And there's a certain history in this town, there's a certain history on Maple Street. To try to close it down permanently is ridiculous. You're losing parking spaces, and it, and you're, you could be hurting the existing tenants that are already in place. And that, I don't think you have a right to do. Temporary closing, if you want a temporary close, and I don't think there's any need for this anymore, because now you have indoor dining. Or limit it to the sidewalks, not the street. And just like Mrs. Racklin mentioned, widen the sidewalks a little bit. Give, get a little bit more access for tables, but don't take away the street. And if you're going to temporary, if you're going to use a temporary closing, it shouldn't be more than 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 four months. It should run from June 1st until September 30th. Last year, when you took a look at Maple Street, closed down in November, and you saw two Cape Cod or Nantucket chairs out there with a, with a, with a heating unit there, and nobody around, and these closed streets were there, and the deliveries were still trying to double park and make their deliveries, is ridiculous. Nobody wants to be outside in November. I, I'm sure you have the three-minute timer. But I'm thoroughly against this. And if you're going to say that everybody's for it, let's see a survey. And let's give the people a town meeting, so they can, so they can come to a town meeting, and then you can make your presentation, and then we'll see the pros and cons and see how many people are for this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford. So I had asked this question in the open comment about the restaurants, if they were paying a fee, and I hadn't heard a response.
Okay. For parklets? For parklets, was it?
And the parklets as well, but I hadn't heard a comment about a response back. So if I could have that, so if the restaurants, sorry, guys, I do like your food, so I apologize. But it is a financial, we're doing the budget thing here. So, you know, we're all trying to get extra money for the town, but that's, that's one of them. And I'm also against having this pedestrian mall for several reasons. Having the deliveries was a huge problem on, on both ends. You know, when the Elks has deliveries, and the Summit House, you guys have deliveries, it backs up traffic, and everyone's trying to go around. Now that we have the parklets on Union Place, I pick up, you know, my husband and my son on the train. People are everywhere. UPS is trying to get their deliveries. It's mayhem now, and nobody knows how to go around it. Starbucks people are trying to get their coffee, and they can't find a spot. It's crazy, and I think we have to figure out deliveries and how that's going to work here and operate, because last year, when you guys were getting your deliveries, it was, it was too crazy. So I think if you guys are thinking about closing the street off, that has to be taken into consideration, because the Summit residents, with kids walking and people driving and dogs and everything else, it's, it's not acceptable just to have the trucks stop in the middle of the street, and then people try to figure out how to go about their day. The heaters is an issue, and the garbage, I've mentioned that before. You know, I feel bad if I was a resident living above and having to look at the trash the next morning. That's, that's a big concern of mine, you know, walking the next morning and picking up trash and stuff. I think it's a big concern, but I am opposed to this for that reason. I do love you guys. I love your food, so please don't spit in my food when I come eat at your restaurant and dine there. But I think as now we're moving on with COVID and the traffic's increasing, it is a big concern, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. I'm Beth Welsh, 129 Blackburn Road. Been in Summit since 1960, and I manage Bassett Associates, which takes care of a lot of the properties in downtown. In particular, I'm speaking about 30, 28, 30, and 32 Maple Street, right where the designated closure is. There's some indication, and as Michael knows, I spent, I, I, let me back up a minute, say, I so appreciate all the things you have to think about that I don't have to think about. I don't know how you do it, all the different topics you cover, but I spend all my time thinking about how the downtown works and how to keep those buildings looking the way they look, and it's not easy. And like last summer. And like last summer, I had to repoint the Roots Building around all that dining. But at least the Roots Steakhouse is my tenant, and we figured out how to do it so as not to, to get it done and not interrupt their business too much. Cost me a little bit more money, but okay. But on 30 Maple Street, the people that put their tables in front of the building are not my tenant. I don't have that kind of relationship. And luckily, when we did, we had to redo the roof, that was 10 years ago, so I probably got 10 years to go on that. But there's some talk in the ordinance that all these buildings can be serviced from alleys. Well, it would have been a lot easier and cheaper for me if I could have lifted the roofing material from inside the Bassett Courtyard, but they couldn't do that. They needed to use Maple Street, we had to close Maple Street on a Sunday, the city required. It was more expensive, but at least I could lift it up. If there were tables and chairs there, how does that happen? The facade of 30 Maple Street has not been repointed in over 20 years, so we're probably coming up on that. That's two to three weeks of scaffolding, and you know, I don't know how that gets done. I know I've worked with Michael over the years, getting permission to start early in the day, which you can't start early in the day in November. In fact, you can't even do masonry work in November or December. So, you know, I would caution you or just suggest, think about making it seasonal such that work can get done during the weather time that work can get done. Because, you know, I can schedule a roof in late September or October, I can't do it in December. I can schedule masonry work, but I can't do it in December. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening, George Paris, P-A-R-A-S. I own 34 Maple. First of all, I want to applaud the council for all the work they do. And I know sometimes it's a very thankless job, and you're trying to improve the quality of life in town, so I applaud that and appreciate it. What I wanted to just bring to the council's attention, which has been said by Mr. Callahan and Beth Welsh, is, well, there are three properties there, 28, 30, and 34, that have no back alley at all. And I'm considering capital improvements to 34 Maple. We're going to have a new, possibly a new restaurant come in. There will be, we're going to need to have a dumpster. We want to do a new roof, and we're going to replace the HVAC units, which requires bringing a crane in. One of the problems I had when I read through the ordinance is, I did not see any provisions for streamlining the ability to get those resources in here to complete these maintenance and improvements. And I'm very concerned about that. That's a, and then also the deliveries for the tenants, not having a back alley, the way when you read the ordinance, it does state that most of the properties have a back alley for supplies and deliveries, where these three properties do not. So I'd like to see that addressed so those businesses could survive.
Okay, thank you.
And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Tony Melchiona, 50 Maple Street, 48 Maple Street, 46 Maple Street, 42 Maple Street. I'm not bragging, I just want to tell you my properties that I own on Maple Street and how concerned I am. March 2022 marked 40 years that I am on Maple Street, and only Maple Street, since I started even cutting Andy's hair back in the day. You want to look at some experts? You want, when he had a full head of hair, too. You want to look at some experts? Okay, let's look at Janie, let's look at Beth, let's look at Bruce. What did I forget? Lori Combius, myself, Gil Orin distinguishing over on Beechwood. These are the experts you want to talk to. SDI is hiring an expert, they're hiring an expert consultant that does this for a living to put permanent malls, pedestrian malls, on streets. A lot of this has been covered, so I should go quick, hopefully. Safety, police, fire, first aid, there's still no plan. There's some communities that may have one half the street or one side of the street closed with tables, and maybe the other side of the street for emergency access. Or maybe George has to put something on his roof, and they switch tables to the other side of the street. We haven't heard anything about that. The properties abutting this street are getting royally, you-know-what. Main thoroughfare, the mayor and myself had a little conversation at an SDI meeting, which I'm a board of trustee member. I was trying to explain that Maple Street is a major thoroughfare from north, south, southwest. She stated it wasn't. So when all this traffic, she did, with all this traffic, and it's in a minute, with all this traffic now not being able to go down Maple Street, where are they going? Summit Avenue. Tractor trailers can't make left turns on Summit Avenue. They can't make right turns coming up Broad Street to Summit Avenue. Don't ask me, ask the residents and school parents that are delivering kids from Northside Summit over to the middle school, and how long it takes. Let's talk about minutes and how critical it is for a fire truck from the fire station where it is currently, right now, to go to the intersection, or let's say, the middle of the Maple Street block. Every minute counts. I guess they'll shoot down Springfield and come back around. There's going to be tons of traffic, because there's only two ways into Maple, into, onto the, it's a town, Springfield Avenue and Summit Avenue. Beechwood, years ago, they wanted to do this in Beechwood, and it got shot down. And it was actually in the master plan. This just came up because someone sent a letter to the mayor, and they went along with it. Traffic nightmare, I agree with you. The town is lawless. I've been in town 40 years. Since the pandemic and the street parklets, eateries, streeteries, whatever you want to call it today, because it's really juicy and sounds great, that created a nightmare. All due respect, chief, lawless. I've never seen these orange pylons and cones and bollards put throughout this town. It's even on Beekman Road, or Beekman Terrace, because people are just absurd. You have to hand them a timer, I'm ready to cancel out?
Yep.
Yep. SDI approved this? What, nine people approved this? And it happened to be the one month I was on vacation. I've been termed off of SDI two times. That means I'm over, well over a decade, representing this town and coming to meetings like this after working all day. Debate canvas, not at all. You know what I was told? I know how you feel, Tony. You're pulling the cart before the horse. Now we want to do studies? Why don't you listen to some people who pay taxes on this town? Largest downtown property owner, taxes. I'll squash most people here with the taxes I pay and pay to the school. And I don't send kids to school. Lastly, 123, I'm going to tell you something about the east side of Maple Street. Property owners, there's nine buildings, there's seven property owners. I don't know how the Elks feel. Seven out of nine property owners do not want this to happen, and most of them are here right now. Businesses, Dewey 360 does not want it, Murray and Finn, Number 18, Salon 44, Esperanza, Kidville, Robot Store, Kennedy Barbershop, those last three, Kidville, Robot Store, Kennedy Barbershop, as tenants said, they would leave if this becomes permanent. Landlords are here to back it up. One more ridiculous thing I saw in your...
You know, it's already, like, you're almost to five minutes. Please wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. And I'm still Gil Orin, known as the local, because I spend more time downtown and in Summit than I do at home sometimes, because that's the way a local operates. And I am opposed to the closing of Maple Street, temporary or permanent. Just so there's no question about it. Some of the comments, people haven't said that. In all due respect, the residents that I talk to, and many of them, are not in favor of this. Sorry, sir. When this, when I got the notice, I said, what's going on? In February, because of the pandemic, the restaurants couldn't utilize their folk, restaurants and so on, there was a vote to make it temporary through November. So I called Rosie, I said, Rosie, there was a vote, and why are we even doing this? There was a vote in February. Well, do a little work. What happened is, the governor terminated March 7th, two weeks after the approval, the executive order lifting COVID, and he said, New Jersey is going to return to normalcy. And he lifted all that. The restaurants then could do exactly what they want to do with their restaurants. That's, so then what happened? EOT said, you're not closing Maple Street. That's the government. So somebody, probably a gentleman over here, said, there's a law that we could maybe use to go back to this and make it temporary, even though pandemic is over and we're returning to normalcy. I'm in favor of restaurants having full use of their restaurants and the sidewalk, not the street. Take a look at half of Union Place right now, where half the parking has those orange things covering six to eight parking spaces. It's unbelievable to me that this would happen. So I, being a lawyer, I looked at the statute, and I defy any of the council people that find what you have to find to make this a pedestrian mall. Let me read the conditions. You must find, there's reasonably convenient alternate routes to other parts of the municipality exist for private vehicles. What? Beechwood Road, their people hopefully will come, and they hit a spot, and they'll go down to Beechwood. It's going to be a problem. It can't be true. Number two, continued use of Maple Street or part thereof by private vehicles may constitute a hazard to the health and safety of pedestrians. Some owner, been there 100 years, the family. That's Maple Street. It's not a hazard to health and safety to have the road?
You're in four minutes, could you please wrap up?
Yeah, I know.
It's already 10 o'clock, we still have the rest of our agenda. I'd ask you to please wrap up.
You also have to find these things. So just give me two minutes more and I'll finish, because there's only two more things. Abutting properties, not these properties, can reasonably and adequately be provided with emergency vehicle services and delivery systems. Other properties near there. Finally, it is in the best interest of the municipality and public and of the benefit to adjacent property owners, such that Maple Street be primarily for pedestrian purposes, and that pedestrian use is determined to be the highest and best use of such street or part thereof. If anybody here can find those things to be true, I question what's going on. I really do. That street is a major artery and should continue to be a major artery for the next 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Good evening.
Good evening, Council President. Dylan Baker, 72 Dale Drive, Summit, New Jersey, as well as a tenant of 10 Maple Street, 16 Maple Street, 18 Maple Street, and 395 Springfield Avenue, where Summit House and Barbacoa Restaurants were located. So, there's been a lot said tonight, and I hear a lot of it. And obviously, I have a side here, right? But I just wanted to get up and say one thing, that the council isn't making up, that there is a huge, huge amount of people in town who really, really like this. And we heard it so many times through COVID. I hope this stays permanent. We hope this stays permanent. COVID was terrible. This was like a silver lining for us. We hope this stays permanent. It's not being made up. I'd love a survey, I'd love a vote, I'm up and for all of it. I really know that I hear, it's close to 1,000 people that I've heard that really, really love this and want it to stay and stick around. So I hear the people in the room, and I appreciate their comments, but I just wanted to get up and say that. Thank you, and it is getting late. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any other comments? Okay, so we're going to try to address some of these things. Mr. Schreger, would you mind coming up to, if you could address access for construction, access for cleaning, the safety issues? Because I know we did have property use review this and look at safety issues, so.
Certainly through you, Council President. We're talking about construction, so at first, we definitely hear that some of these property owners will have construction. We absolutely want to work with them. We did work with, I believe it was the Lululemon Building during one of the closure years. So to try to look at this a little differently, if the road was open, they would be approaching the city to get the road closed and paying police and probably maybe even working at night. So essentially, we'll do some of the legwork for them. As long as they reach out to us, we will work with the restaurants. We'll essentially do the heavy lifting of working with the restaurants to move to the side or however it needs to be to permit them to do their construction, so. But then there wouldn't be the need for a police presence and that fee because the road is closed. So it's kind of, you know, one way to look at it a little differently, so. In terms of safety access, yes, we would like those barriers to be far more attractive. Unfortunately, one, the police definitely approve of those because they do have significant weight filled with water. But if you pulled the plug, they drain almost instantly, that they could be moved very easily if there was a major emergency event that you needed to get in there. Police and fire both reviewed that, and it did exist the last two years, so. In terms of cleaning, it would still be our responsibility, we're still able to get in there. We will have a much greater presence this year, being somewhat out of the pandemic with our DPW forces, cleaning up the areas. We're also looking at editing our solid waste ordinance and doing a very big education campaign because things did get a little messy, just its overall behavior throughout the whole town, we're fully aware of that. I will be walking the whole downtown with the Superintendent of Public Works tomorrow to identify this and prepare for what's coming, but cleaning would still be able to happen the way it is. And with a full staff this year, we'll be more proactive to the restaurants and their parklets and sidewalk cafes and the Maple closure.
Will there also be enforcement of, you know, making sure that the restaurants do clean up and take care of their garbage and things like that as well?
Yeah, absolutely, so.
And what about, the other thing that I heard was complaints about restaurants operating both on the sidewalk and the street. Will there be some effort to make sure that there is space for the pedestrians along the sidewalk when the street is closed?
Yeah, absolutely, but these, go ahead.
Oh, you got something?
Council President, it's very, it's made clear to some of the restaurants that if they are using the closure, they can't use the sidewalk.
But I think that needs to be, right, so it needs to be enforced, then?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that there will be enforcement of that as well this year?
Absolutely. It'll be proactive this year more than it has been in the past. We didn't have a code enforcement officer most of last year, so.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we're a little more reactive, but we are on top of it, and we're ready, so.
Okay, great, thank you. I think that covers the questions on that, and then there was a...
Council President?
Yes.
Did, I'm sorry, did he talk about deliveries?
Deliveries, sorry, that was the last one. I knew that I was missing one.
Yes, again, through you, Council President, we're happy to work with whoever knows they have planned deliveries. Obviously, a lot of these deliveries just kind of happen, and it's almost impossible to control, we can appreciate that. I would have to ask police, I did not get any complaints that deliveries were challenged last year. This area of Maple Street, both sides do not have a formal delivery zone, so it's not that we're removing a designated loading zone. Yes, they use it, yes, they use spots all over downtown, that's the unfortunate indication of a successful downtown. But for the larger deliveries, again, if they're scheduled, we're happy to work with whoever we need to to make it happen.
And then I had one other question, the fee, it's, we're now doing a fee, like a per-table fee, not a square footage fee, right?
That's right.
For liquor licenses?
That's correct.
And, so we do charge for liquor licenses on a per-table fee? And we don't, and we are exploring the option of, for this year, we're not charging for the use of roadway for non...
For parklets.
And parklets, right. But we are looking into that for next year.
Correct.
Through you, Council President.
Yes.
There is a charge, though, for the expansion of a liquor license.
Of a liquor license.
And that in 2020, that in 2020 changed over to the same style of fee as the cafe fees. So it's charged on a per-table, per-seat basis.
Council President, if I may, I just want to caution those who have, like, the license, licenses and move into the street, they're only there because of the COVID... They're only there because of the COVID-19 expansion permit. Once that's lifted, I'm not sure if the footprint of your liquor license can be moved to that on a more permanent basis. So that's something you're going to have to look into with the ABC.
Thank you. All right, so I think that covered, and you're also, the propane tanks, again, that's the fire department, I believe. Do you have anything to add, Chief Evers? Because I believe you guys work, deal with things like the fire, the safety. Thank you, Mr. Schreger.
Is it pertaining to propane or any other comment?
Yeah, propane tanks and any of the safety issues that were raised.
Yes, I mean, we comment when this comes across the desk, we comment on our concerns. As far as the response to the area with our trucks, it's not really a major response. We have, the sidewalks are open. Only problem may come initially if you had an actual fire there. There may be some delay in deploying apparatus. But most of the calls uptown are far from going to sidewalk. We have access to the buildings. But if there was any potential big event in that area, there may be a delay on getting apparatuses deployed in that area. And as far as propane goes, our inspectors, the tenants that require to get a permit for any propane, we inspect it, make sure they're safe, they didn't slip away. And we're working on something to properly come up with long-term storage of propane in town, so that's all that works.
Thank you.
All right, so I think that covers all questions. Did you want to?
Go ahead, yeah.
Sorry. November 30th, only because I'm hearing people saying they wish it was a little shorter, is it a hard date? Would be, would we, would we be willing to potentially shorten that timeframe? Through you, Council President, I don't know.
I think that's something that could be discussed.
I think the way it's written, the original resolution was written as March 15th to November 30th. There was really no intention of going that early. It was really weather dependent. If we have a big snowstorm in October, I think this whole thing is going to be put away. Right? I think it is weather dependent and we'll have to just wait and see. But yeah, it's just a placeholder. That's the longest it can be, but it can be shorter.
Councilmember Little?
Thank you, I'm permanent. I just want to address a few things. First of all, as the House of Representatives committee through the whole pandemic and being on the face of, I've gotten a lot of feedback on the Maple Street closure, and it has been overwhelmingly positive. I agree with the comments by Dylan Baker. I have gotten many, many emails and just people coming up to me and talking to me, and the feedback from residents has been really very overwhelmingly positive about the closure of Maple Street. I also want to address the fact that there are other businesses on Maple Street, and through the cold time of this closure, we've been very flexible about working with the other businesses on Maple Street, coming up with solutions for these businesses as far as drop off them. Some businesses have used the area of Maple Street. We just approved a resolution for last week for yoga to take place again. On the street, Robot Revolution kind of camp there. Some other businesses have used this space, it's not just for the restaurant, it's having other businesses have access to this. I've also gotten a lot of feedback from other business owners in the downtown that the closure of Maple Street and the draw of having this ample outdoor space has brought a lot of people from outside Summit into the downtown and really kept our downtown very healthy environment and really supported a lot of the other businesses in town, not just in the Medicaid area, but throughout the whole downtown. We have one of the healthiest downtown areas in the entire state of New Jersey, maybe, you know, beyond the state of New Jersey, coming out of pandemic. And one of the reasons is that we were still proactive about supporting our businesses and just with the parklets, this closure, all these things. We have, you know, I think it's 97% occupancy rate here downtown. We're just recognized, the one of the best downtowns in New Jersey. You know, this doesn't happen by accident. Again, it's because we came up with these solutions, we worked with both the restaurants that were struggling and the other businesses to be flexible, proactive. We work with everyone to make this, you know, make this work for the greatest number of people possible. You know, and the third point I'll just make, and we keep going, it's getting very, very late, but we are trying to get back to being normal. The restaurants are open, but let's all recognize, there are four of the biggest businesses in town, the restaurants that use this space primarily, as well as the other businesses that are using the access to Maple Street. And they're coming out of three very, very difficult years, where they didn't have access to their space and they didn't have the revenues that they're used to having. And we want to make sure that we continue to support them and that we continue to give, make sure that our downtown is healthy and vibrant and, you know, a big draw for everyone else. So I, despite, I'm listening and I took notes on the comments, and we're going to try to address some of the concerns, clearly, as we always do. But I enthusiastically and overwhelmingly support this resolution, which is really just a different way of wording the resolution we already passed earlier in spring. So it's going to end in November for the end, it's not coming closure. We will be revisiting this issue, but I enthusiastically support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I do want to thank the residents of Maple Street who have come up and shared their concerns. I am very appreciative of the businesses, and I am highly disappointed that our amazing SDI Executive Director Nancy Adams is not here because the work that she has done is, has been incredible. And I appreciate Councilmember Sullivan's context that the wording has been changed to allow for flexibility because this council is listening and responding and engaging. And so I know how challenging it is to expect to hear something and feel that decisions are made foolishly and you weren't surveyed or contacted by it. Well, it's not how municipal government is run. Don't do things by survey, folks. And you would not want your, you would not want your city run by survey. And so I, despite the things that I've heard that are concerning, I am so in favor of this because I was one of the folks who was also approached by people from out of town who are saying, what a pleasure it was to come to Summit and what a respite it was for us. But I do hear the concerns raised about the delivery trucks, and I have 100% confidence that Director Schreger will take care of that because that is the way we have been partnering in this community to be responsive. Government does not move quickly. However, we have been doing staff, residents, businesses, and everyone has been doing their best to be responsive because there are competing concerns. And so that's why we're happy to be up here to manage this. So, Council President, I just wanted to bring up those couple of issues, how well this has been thought out, to be flexible, to be responsive, and we'll continue doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Any other comments from members of council? All right, so, you know, we've heard, but...
Council President, I do have two couple of comments.
Oh, yep, yep.
I would, I will attempt to summarize them just in view of the time, but Marilyn Zaka of Ashland Road speaks of the reasons for the closure was initially because of the COVID pandemic, and it made sense to have restaurants doing the outdoor dining. But since then, the COVID cases have been drastically declining, and indoor dining is now readily available. She says that there's ample sidewalk space on Maple for chairs and tables for dining and for pedestrians, and the street should continue to be used by vehicles and pedestrians. So she, she just shares her opposition to having a temporary or anything closure of that area. The next one is from Daven Zukowski. He's the owner of Robot Revolution on Maple Street, and he, I'm just going to read some of his comments here. He assumes that the eventual usage of Maple Street will be similar to last year. This usage was almost exclusively for restaurant expansion space. Customer access, business access, and business visibility were all adversely impacted for other businesses. We hope that these concerns are taken into account if the town moves forward. During the last closure, the entire street from one side to the other was occupied by tables that abutted the sidewalks. The sidewalks were used for busing, stations, and hospitality. Therefore, streets were completely blocked by tables, restaurant patrons, and restaurant stations, and this discouraged walking down the street. Tents were erected across the entire street. This further indicated to potential customers that the block was a restaurant. It also obscured signage for other businesses. Delivery vehicles run by our employees were ticketed, went standing for only 10 minutes, and there is no back entrance to their building. We would feel much better if the ordinance or future ordinance had specifics to mitigate the impact to businesses on the street. Our preliminary suggestion is as follows: No tents except for special day-long events such as street fairs. There must be a clearly defined pedestrian walkway that cannot be mistaken to be part of a restaurant, and hospitality or bus services must occur inside the boundary of the street or away from the clearly defined walkway. Tables must be placed to allow for space between the table and any chairs and the sidewalk or away from the clearly defined walkway. Delivery vehicles be allowed sufficient access, or business allowed special permits for loading and unloading. An additional signage for businesses be installed at the ends of the pedestrian mall. We realize restaurants have a difficult time, have had a difficult time, and that they draw people from surrounding towns. We have had similar difficult times. Under normal times, we draw over 300 families to the town each week from as far away as Fort Lee, Hoboken, and Titten Falls. We ask further details regarding closure before carefully considering the outlined. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think a lot of, some of those concerns have been addressed, that there will, there should be a clearly defined walkway, and that will be something that's enforced. I, you know, I've heard both sides here. I've heard, you know, a lot from residents. I think on balance, the residents have, you know, have said that this is something very, very positive for the community. And I think what I would urge everyone is to please work together, you know. A lot of the business, you know, the restaurants, I think, have been flexible about working with the other businesses and, you know, allowing the space to be shared, and I would encourage you all to do that. And we will, as a city, work with, with all of the owners of properties to make sure that there is access to their properties and that everyone gets what they need. But I think this is one of those things where it really is a compromise situation, you know, where the best thing is for everyone to work together. So I support this, this ordinance, and I guess at this point, I'm going to close the hearing, and we'll move on to final consideration. So Councilmember O'Sullivan, oh, you got to read it.
Ordinance number 22-3255, an ordinance establishing a pedestrian mall pursuant to NJSA 40:56-65 at SEC in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Okay, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. As we just held a very robust hearing on this ordinance, I move to adopt it.
One second.
All right, roll call, please. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartin?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, and we're moving on now to the resolutions. Wow, okay, so Community Programs of Parking Services, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. I took so many notes, I need to get to my other ones. So this is, this is number 9624, and the resolution, and this resolution authorizes the use of public property at Tatlock Field as the site of a new lacrosse wall and gazebo. This project, provided at no cost to the city, includes a lacrosse wall and an enclosed field space where you can practice lacrosse shots. The other side of the wall, the gazebo side, is an open roof-covered space which can be used for viewing sporting events at Investors Field and as a general meeting space protected from the rain. Available for use by the entire Summit sporting community, this project and its maintenance will be funded by the Summit Lacrosse 50th Anniversary Planning Committee through contributions made to the Summit Foundation. And I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
One, actually, Council President, just to say, to add my thanks to the Summit Lacrosse 50th Anniversary Planning Committee. Thank you for your perseverance, your willingness to raise money, and your dedication to youth sport. Thank you.
I would also like to say something real quick.
Sure.
Mark, you said that this has been at least in discussion for 20 years. So this is a really big deal, and I've seen, I've seen some practicing happening on other walls, so this is nice to actually give them a wall to practice on directly.
Okay. Any other comments? Anything from the, from anyone in the public? Okay. You had to sit there a long time, so if you...
I would just add, I would just add, I'm in favor of this. You know, sports in general, lacrosse particularly, has provided great opportunities for our kids to move on to college and further their lives. So I'm in favor of this. I'm looking for more state championships coming out of having our own dedicated wall now, so.
No pressure.
Let's go, let's go.
No pressure, though.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess if we have no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and now we're moving on to the second, Community Programs of Parking Services.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9623. Per our discussion in closed session, this resolution is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Diane Gallo to the Community Programs Advisory Board. This appointment is a, is for a term of three years, and Diane will add valuable enthusiasm and perspective to this board. I move to adopt the resolution.
I enthusiastically second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Well, we thank Ms. Gallo for agreeing to serve. I think this will be her second round on Community Programs Advisory Board, so I think she'll make a great addition. So with that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're moving on to Capital Projects and Community Services, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9481. To award the bid, Tulip Street Improvement Project for $404,221.11. SNL Contractors of Kennelworth, New Jersey was the winning bid of the eight received by the city for the Tulip Street Improvement Project. SNL Contractors has completed various capital improvement projects to the city's satisfaction over the past decade. The scope of this project is the portion of Tulip Street between Ashland Road and Mountain Avenue. It will include the repair of sidewalks and curbs, drainage upgrades, milling and paving, and safety improvements, which include crosswalk enhancements and bump outs at the intersection of Myrtle Avenue. The cost of this project is being offset by a Union County Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant in the amount of $75,000. I was fortunate enough to be at the county commissioners' meeting this past Thursday, and I gratefully accepted this check on behalf of the city. I move this resolution.
One second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
Council President, I actually, if it's okay, I'd like to hear the residents, because I know there's people here to speak about it. So can I reserve my?
Well, yeah, no, you'll, we can come back.
I was going to have them...
I don't think I didn't have an opinion.
Nope, nope, that's fine. Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Lou Scanzello. I am the owner of 44 Laurel Ave here in Summit, and I am here speaking about ID 9481, the Tulip Street Improvement Project. My concerns and my strong opposition to this plan are specifically to the portion of the plan between the Laurel-Tulip-Watchung intersection. The current proposal of the plan would be a direct change to the footprint of my property by completely ripping out and altering the sidewalk in front of my house and my neighbor, Mr. Solberg, who owns... sidewalk in front of my house and my neighbor, Mr. Solberg, who owns 46 Laurel Ave. He was here tonight. Unfortunately, he had to leave to attend to a personal matter. But he is also, as well as other members of our, our community, are firmly against this change. The proposal, as I said, calls for the ripping out of my front yard and, and creating a peninsula out towards Tulip Street. Okay? The change here is manufactured, in my view, by the opportunity to spend this grant and to spend the funds that were allocated. There has been no, at any point, this is a 100-year-old neighborhood, at no point has there ever been any safety concerns raised, and Mr. Schreger has, has admitted in some of the community meetings, that there has never been a safety concern raised with that specific intersection between Laurel-Tulip and Watchung. My strong views against this, I'll quickly go through a couple. As I said, there's been no risks cited for this neighborhood, for this 100-year-old neighborhood. The, the safety concerns that are not there would, this project would actually create safety concerns for my family. I have three young children, ages two to seven. My children run around my house on a daily basis, and this extension of my property towards Tulip Street would put them right in harm's way of oncoming traffic. Laurel Ave is a very quiet street. There is no traffic, pedestrian or auto, that happens on Laurel Avenue. I have sat in my office overlooking this direct intersection for the last two years during the pandemic, and there is no foot traffic. During school drop-off in the morning, during school pickup in the evening, the street and the specific intersection at hand is not used, period. My children would now be put towards Tulip Street, and Tulip Street is the only complaint that I'm aware of, that my neighbors and I have talked about, in this intersection that there is any problems because people speed down Tulip Street. So this, this change would not address any of the speeding traffic in Tulip Street, and nothing in this proposal would address the speeding traffic on Tulip Street. It is now putting my children and altering my property. Secondly, the negative appearance had changed to my property. This is, this is a change to the property that I own, that I've purchased, and I have not been formally notified at any point about the changes of this, this happening. The only reason I am here tonight, and the only reason I have been made aware of any of these changes happening, is because of the members of my community that have notified me. If, if I am having my owners, my, my land changed significantly, 100% of the front of my house would be altered by this plan. I have not been communicated to by anyone formally. The plans that I have seen have only been handed to me second-hand through my neighbors. That is not acceptable when there is a plan that would 100% change my property. I cannot stand for that. The water is a concern. There is a lot of water that runs down Tulip Street towards Laurel. If we're going to change the sewer there, that is a concern. I do not want pools of water that would now sit in this peninsula. Snow removal is a concern. I already have major piles up of snow at the park that sits right in front of my house. You would now put another pile of snow because the snow piles would not be able to navigate around this extremely awkward traffic pattern that you've created. And then lastly, I'll say, the traffic pattern is another point of serious concern. We have cars traveling down high speeds down Tulip that would now have to make a sharp right-hand turn and an immediate left to navigate onto Laurel. This, this awkward turn would be right at my doorstep. So again, I have children playing in front of my house, and we have cars now making a very awkward, in a, in a small amount of space, two sharp turns. This is a complete, complete backward step, in my opinion, to the community. It does not address any concerns that we actually have, and frankly, it, it, it's, it's, the current proposal for this peninsula is even a massive step back from the first proposal, which was to put an island in the middle of the street to create this, this crosswalk that no one is asking for except the, the company that did this proposal. It, it, it's a crosswalk that will not be used. I, I challenge anyone to sit by there for one afternoon, and you will see nobody attempt to cross that street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Allison Chiefo, 34 Laurel Ave. Now, I just want to talk about exactly the same thing that Lou was talking about. My house was built in 1925, and so many of the houses in the neighborhood. We're part of the Summit Homeland Company Historic District. This neighborhood was developed in, like I said, early 1900s. We do not, we have, we have a Triangle Park, which is a piece of, which is not listed on the City of Summit website as a park or facility. It's a green space, and that is the park that's across the street from us on Laurel Avenue. This is a very quiet neighborhood, except for one day of the year, July 4th. It's the only time that we ever see any traffic, anyone on this, on the street. Talking about meetings and communicating with the neighbors and what's going on. So what happened was, I guess there was a Zoom meeting that was planned in early March, and very few people were invited to this meeting. And what I can, the reason why I think very few people were invited was because if you look at some of these intersections, some of the houses, like for instance Lou's neighbors on Laurel, the house next to him is on Tulip, on one street, houses in a row on different, on different streets, house across the streets on Watchung. So nobody really paid much attention to the Tulip Street Improvement Meeting, those few that were invited. After that meeting, there was a screenshot that was shared through the neighbors, and nobody could figure it out. So a couple of neighbors and I decided to meet with Aaron and to find out what's going on. So we wanted to know, why is this project being discussed? And we're told it has to do with milling and paving of Tulip Street. Well, that's fine. The budget is $400,000, but there's two major intersection changes that are being proposed. One of them is up the block at the intersection of Myrtle, Watchung, no, not Myrtle, Laurel, Tulip, and Watchung. And that's the intersection that he was referring to. This intersection is so quiet that the second time we had Aaron come out to our neighborhood to talk to us, we actually had the meeting in the middle of the street. There was a dozen neighbors standing in the middle of Laurel Avenue in the rain, not one car came by. And you can attest to that because you were there for that. So we don't know why any changes are being done to this, to these intersections. I'm still, I've asked numerous times, what was the catalyst for the changes of this intersection? Where are the traffic and pedestrian studies that are justifying any of these expenditures? What is the cost for all this extra? So the total cost of the budget is $400,000. How much of that is being used to, to, to change that, the intersection that I just mentioned? And there's also another intersection that's being, that's being proposed to be changed. The other one is the intersection of Myrtle, Tulip, yeah, Myrtle and, yeah, Myrtle and Tulip, and, yes, Myrtle and Tulip, I'm sorry. Myrtle and Tulip, it's right by Royal Field, I'm sorry, it's right by Brayton Street. The Triangle Park that I'm talking about, like I said before, it's not a park. It's not listed on the City of Summit website. It's a green space. Part of this proposal is to put a sidewalk to add two extra crosswalks, one across Myrtle Avenue to, from, to the park, and one from the park across Tulip, Tulip Street. These, in my opinion, and not only my opinion, my neighbors' opinion, are two crosswalks that we have, we cannot figure out if there's any practicality with these crosswalks. There's no scenario where the neighbors and I could collectively determine where a pedestrian would be traveling to in front to use either of these proposed crosswalks. Adding a sidewalk on Triangle Park will be taking away part of the green space in this cherished pocket park. If, why would we, would we add a non-porous surface, could we add it to an open green space in this town when we already have drainage, drainage issues in Summit, and especially on Triangle Park? If I wanted to add concrete patio to my property, I would have to go make sure I had the proper lock coverage. Why would we take a park that does not, that is not accessible? I've heard things have been discussed that it needs to be handicap accessible. This is not a park. It's a green space. It's a waste of money, and all we heard tonight is all the way we're trying to save money. I'm telling you, we're telling you right here, this is a way to save money. There's no reason to make changes except that you want, you're looking to spend money. If it's only $75,000 is the, is the amount that has to be spent, spend it on the milling and spend, spend it on the paving. The, all
Chiefo, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please. I've given you a lot of extra time, if you could just wrap up.
I, I will. We've had two meetings with Aaron. We've had numerous email communications. Not one person, everybody has been opposed to this. If the neighbor's opposed to something, when, when, why is our voice is not being heard? The information that we're getting, that we're getting back is just not acceptable. There's no reason why, like I said, why are we not being communicated with? Why is this being, why is this, why is this even happening? Nobody, no, not one person told me, and I want to see, where is the traffic and pedestrian studies that are, that are, that are, the catalyst for these changes? And I haven't seen, I haven't seen them because I don't think they exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schreger, the fun never ends. Come on up. You could please address this.
Yes, through you, Council President.
Absolutely.
A few things. One, just for the record, which is, I think goes without saying for the governing body. I work for the City of Summit. We've designed this project in-house, so there was no game marketing dollar-wise whatsoever, just to clear that up. Just to detail the process, what we've done for at least my 14 years, when there is a capital improvement project, we, we have a meeting typically with, we send the mailing to every resident that abuts the project. So, so the limited number of people was every resident on Tulip. I, Mr. Sanzillo, I think, I'm sorry if I forgot the name wrong. I did, he was left off, though there was some work in front of his house. I've apologized to his, his wife in person and over the phone, and him in, in writing. So that, that was an omission on, on my behalf. He should have been included. We did have subsequent meetings after that with residents who did, did reach out. We do not canvass adjacent neighborhoods. It just becomes too, too big of a, of an endeavor. So we do just keep it to people who abut the project. What I have also shared, the residents did come out very strongly, and we do hear them. We definitely listen to them. There are some concerns. Safety Committee and CAPS Committee has seen some improvements that we've proposed. One such improvement that did have the island initially was removed based on feedback we got. When we met again, there was a request for additional changes, which we are definitely looking at and considering. And we still just have not made those revisions yet to circulate it. So that has been conveyed in, in writing to, to both residents that came here today, that the plan is not set. Unfortunately, we did have to meet the timeline. We were trying to shoehorn this in between 4th of July and school closing, so we could not hold up the project with the bidding process. Making changes during construction that are not, you know, major, though it might seem major, and I definitely can appreciate that it, it feels impactful to, to a resident's property, can still be done. I have spoken to the contractor who will be awarded the project, gave him a heads up. He said, absolutely, until I have a formal sign-off for a plan, not a big deal. He won't be here till, till July, you know, 5th or 6th anyway. But, but we definitely hear all the details. The main purpose of the project was that the road is, is past its useful life, so it is milling and paving. There is drainage concerns. There is very high water, there was a lot of sump pumps. We're going to pick up as, as many of those as we can, really all of them, keep drainage flowing, try to preserve trees. So we're, we're not trying to really have a big impact, but we've definitely, you know, heard the, the concerns, and there is a revised plan coming out that we will circulate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schreger. Any other comments from members of council? Did you have something now, Mr. Councilmember Allen?
Yeah. I didn't realize, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Lou, Lou Scanzello.
Scanzello, okay, through you, Council President. So one concern is that he didn't see the plan, and I, Aaron's very thorough, so I, you know, I'm, I just wanted to bring that up. And I think for me, I'm concerned that we don't have a full plan yet. I, the milling has to be done, and the roadwork and the water work has to be done, but I'm going to lean on the side that the neighbors have been writing in. There's still a lot of concern, and I think I'd love to see the plan, the full plan, before we actually vote it in. So unless there's something more administrative that says we have to vote tonight on the fund, the funding, I would be, sorry, it's getting late. I would be basing my vote on the neighborhood and kind of where we're at right now. So I just wanted to say.
I think there is a restrict, an issue with the timing because of the bid. My, my understanding, can you explain the timing, please, Mr. Schreger? Because we have only a certain amount of time to award the bid, correct?
That is correct.
What is the timing?
I'd have to just refresh when the bid date was.
Yeah. It's usually, there's a.
60 days.
Yeah.
60 days when.
From what?
From bid receipt.
From the receipt. Which was what?
That's, uh.
That's what I don't know.
April, April 12th, so, so we could do that.
So we need to, we need to do it tonight, or we can?
No, we, we could post, but the risk we run is, is the contractor, you know, if it's not a sure thing right now, he could very well go in, and then the school traffic, he could start September 1st. We can't restrict him.
Okay.
So that's the risk there, but.
Right.
And I certainly understand council members' concerns.
Right.
I, I can appreciate that.
But on the other hand, this project doesn't happen if we don't get it scheduled for that time period.
We just could miss it, and we could be dealing with, with traffic. I, I know, you know, we hear two things, that it's a quiet neighborhood. I also hear it's absolute chaos at school time, and I've witnessed that, so it, it will be that much, you know, it will be chaos and steroids if it is happening during school time.
So is the, is this bump out not going to be happening then, or how is that going to be addressed?
It doesn't, it's, and to be perfectly honest, our, our one engineer that's left was away for a while, so he has an iteration that we haven't sat down and looked at. It did not have the bump out.
Okay.
It had some striping alterations, but we just haven't had a chance, and that, and that falls on us. We've just been trying to, to get all these projects lined up, so.
Okay.
But the plans are always, and have been on the city website. They've been up there since the meeting, so. And we can continue to post the updated plans up there.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
Just a, two, two quick questions. One is, this is a typical milling and paving project, right? So can you just talk about the grading that you do and how it was determined that Tulip is, or that this area is basically a higher priority than everything else that needs to be paved?
Absolutely. So the, the engineering division, we do an annual road assessment. We do drive every road, every section of road. We've developed our own kind of program since we, we are a smaller municipality relative to, you know, road, road rating programs are generally, you know, created for DOT statewide, so. So we kind of have a hybrid we've been using for about seven or eight years to rate the roads. With that, Tulip is, has fallen, you know, pretty low on the list. I don't have the exact numbers, but enough that it was in the capital plan last year. This is the project coming forward, and if you drive it, especially at the top by mountain, the road is, is passing its useful life.
And then the second question is, we have a pretty detailed sidewalk installation and maintenance policy and plan, which outlines where there are sidewalks now, where there should potentially be sidewalks. I'm looking at the, the page 26. I don't, I don't see a plan for sidewalks on the actual little triangle there. And I know we shouldn't definitely be encouraging kids to play on something that's really not a park, but is, are the sidewalks contemplated in the plan to be on the triangle, and, and are they helpful? Is there a specific reason why they're helpful?
Yeah, the, the safety concern that's been voiced by both the Board of Ed, the Safety Committee, the Police Department, is that intersection is just very wide because you have the, the swath of land in Myrtle. That's a park, it's Lair Park, which I actually learned through this process, so I wasn't aware of that. So because that, you have a very awkward intersection where you have Myrtle coming this way, two directions, and then it's split up the other way. So within that area, there was original requests a couple of years ago for a four-way stop, but because of that distance, it just doesn't function properly. So the desire was to box out that intersection, so the, the people in there don't wind up pulling all the way through and have some more awareness until they get to the one crosswalk that does exist. Now, by Title 39, the, the state statute, which does say, those crosswalks exist at every intersection, whether they're striped or not. And if it was federal money, which it's not, you would have to put at least the ramp for ADA accessibility where the, the striped crosswalk goes, and then we're just connecting them. So it's a very small piece of sidewalk, which is something that we don't even have to install that, but we do have to install the ramp. So it's really governed by state and ADA rules.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Schreger while he's up?
Ms. Little.
Oh, Councilmember Little. Oh, Councilmember Little.
I just want to say, this is the Republican House and Community, and the Community Committee, third, you know. I'm a little confused about what a councilwoman, I'm concerned about not being done, because we have been doing that extensively in Safety Committee. And there might be some small tweaks that we go along, and we are still thinking you put them public, but by and large, the plans are pretty detailed, and we've gone over them extensively. And all those improvements that are being done are being done because of concerns for pedestrian safety, primarily children's pedestrian safety. This is like, this is the area where I break school, and the kids come from Memorial Hill and break school. We have some things for residents in the area over the years about being in the area, about, you know, kids being safe in the area. And all of the improvements that we made, it's, you know, while we're doing some cleaning, I meant to improve pedestrian safety and the safety of children. So, you know, there are lots of concerns with their residents, but we've been interviewing them all. We've had Jennifer Lee and Tom, you know, heard all the concerns. You know, some people were concerned about one piece, and others, some people were concerned about another piece, some people were concerned about other pieces, and different people liked the plan areas and plans. So, you know, we did, and those happened, Safety Committee, all the comments that were, that were brought to us, we did make some changes to the plans. There is some of those comments, but, you know, we did come to the conclusion of both committees that the improvements that were being made were necessary to improve pedestrian safety, to decrease the speed in the area, and to, you know, go forward with the improvements that need to be done, to make the state, the road surface better, the drainage better in the area, and pedestrian safety improved. So, you know, I'm still very much in favor of this plan going forward. And as always, if we can look for improvements or take more comments, as the project's going on, we will do so.
Can I respond, Council President? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Allen.
I just felt that in light of the resident coming in and saying he hadn't been notified, and in light of, and Councilwoman Little is correct that we did see the plans, what just caught my attention is the neighbors are here, and they said that, when you said that there was a plan still kind of in motion, I'm just asking that if it's not fully finalized, I would prefer to vote on a final, final. That's all. So, but if there was money that we need to vote on, I'm happy to vote on that. The only thing is, I just want to make sure that the plan, that we know what people are getting. That's all. Like-
Councilmember Allen, we're not voting on the plan. What we're voting on is awarding the bid.
Right.
But so the plan is what's worked, was, is worked out in the Capital Projects Committee as well as the Safety Committee. So council members will still have input as to what's finally done. But in the interest of not delaying the awarding of the bid, so we could potentially miss this whole season, or end up having to do this in September when the kids are going back to school, which is definitely not a popular option, I would, I would say that it makes a lot of sense to allow the committee, and, you know, and you sit on one of these committees, so you will have access to this information. So I would encourage you in Safety to, to address this issue there. And, you know, but that's, that's just what I'm suggesting. Any other comments, questions?
I just want to reiterate, if I can, confirm that-
Sure.
...who came in and said he wasn't advised initially, but he, since then, he, you know, he and the board have both had meetings with Director Schreger, that's Director Schreger, and he's been fully informed of the plans at this point.
Correct, yes. Though not him specifically, a member of his family, yes.
All right. So with that, you can have a seat. Thank you. Any, I think we're done with comments. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. No.
No.
I don't know what to say. I never opposed.
Nay.
Nay. Sorry. Okay. So motion carries. Moving on to Capital Projects number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9479, to award the bid for the Park Avenue Improvement Project for $906,715.11. SNL Contractors of Kennelworth, New Jersey was the winning bid of the seven received by the city for the Park Avenue Improvement Project. And they'll be the ones doing the Tulip Street project. The work for this project will include the repair of sidewalks and curbs, drainage upgrades, safety improvements, crosswalk enhancements, installation of a streetlight system, and the milling and paving of the entire length of Park Avenue. The cost of this project is being offset by a New Jersey Department of Transportation local aid grant in the amount of $395,000, or almost 44% of the total cost. I move to adopt this resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments from members of council? I guess there are no members of the public anymore, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're on to Capital Projects number three.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9442, to authorize an extension of state contract online auction services with munisabid.com LLC through April 30th, 2023. The City of Summit entered into a three-year contract with munisabid in May of 2019, which included any contract extensions improved by the state of New Jersey. Recently, an extension has been approved by the state through April 30th, 2023. All terms, conditions, and pricing remain the same. The city uses the online auction services of munisabid for the disposal of public property, no longer needed, such as vehicles, construction equipment, and various office furniture and equipment. I move this resolution.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I think you can bundle four and five, Councilmember Allen.
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Please.
Thank you, Council President. Just give me one second. This is ID number, numbers 9619 and 9618, to approve temporary parklet location at Seven Union Place, and a parklet location at 10 to 12 Bank Street for the restaurant, Sarah. The previous one is for Pizza Vita. Pizza Vita and Sarah Restaurant have both requested the installation of parklets in front of their restaurants. We approved the parklet requests in committee, which will have these restaurants using the same locations and number of spots as last year. I ask that we approve these resolutions.
Thank you.
Any comments from members of council? Comments? Nope, from the public. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Actually.
You actually want to pull something out?
Can we pull something out?
The one time I didn't offer it, sure.
I know. I know how, I know how late it is. It's, I wouldn't do it if it wasn't important.
No, it's the squad. I get it.
9629, Capital Projects and Community Services. This resolution allows the squad to place lawn signs, certain spots around town. On Monday, April 25th, between 3:36 p.m. and 5:07 p.m., the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad received five calls for emergency medical assistance. To put that in perspective, the squad normally averages about six calls a day. It's extremely rare to receive five medical calls in 90 minutes. The dedicated members of Summit MS covered all of them, and it's just an example of how the people make the organization. And this, in celebration of the 60th anniversary of the squad this year, the campaign that they're doing is for membership. So for 60 years, people in their most vulnerable moments have been helped by caring, compassionate, and talented first responders, who also happen to be our neighbors. I, being a member of the squad for the last 12 years, has made me the person I am today, by presenting me with some of the most challenging moments of my life, some of the most rewarding experiences of my life, and providing me with a second family for whom I am incredibly grateful. So I hope you'll join me in supporting this resolution that we were probably going to just approve anyway.
Right. So do we now have to vote on it?
No.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the capital, the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have one last item, which is, any item for discussion, Capital Projects and Community Services. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is, this DAR is number 9609, regarding a composting agreement with Green Bucket for the city's composting program on a trial basis. A composting program within the City of Summit has been the goal of the Recycling Advisory Committee since before I was elected to council. The more I've learned about removing food scraps from our waste stream, the more I realized this is another way to have a meaningful impact on reducing the garbage that we send to the incinerator. When food waste ends up in a, in, in, when some food waste ends up in a landfill, it takes up space and releases methane gas, which is extremely harmful to the environment. Our garbage goes to an incinerator. But the point is, the environmental benefits are enormous. Food waste is also very heavy, and removing it from your weekly collection will greatly reduce the city's tipping fees. Over the last year, the Capital Projects Committee and the Recycling Advisory Committee have intensified the effort to bring a food composting program to Summit. Excuse me, I'm just having computer issues. Both committees feel that a voluntary program will bring much-needed attention to this topic and create opportunities to increase composting and waste stream reduction. Members of both committees have met with various vendors who offer composting services. Based on our research and the interview process, we have decided to use Green Bucket composting. The agreement with them will include the following for this voluntary trial program. A six-month trial period. Four bins will be placed at the transfer station with a weekly pickup by Green Bucket. The total cost for the six-month period will be $3,996. We can modify the program based on usage. And the CAP Committee will gather data and report back to council as to the impact. Our goal is to start on June 1st and go through December 1st, 2022. There will be signs at the transfer station showing residents where to dispose of their material. We will be educating the public through social media and signs as to what kind of material residents can put in these bins. There are so many people to thank, but I will name just one person who was so instrumental in getting us where we are today, and that is Karen Reihauer, who used to chair the Recycling Advisory Committee. Without her leadership and focus, we would not be having this discussion tonight, and we would not be composting in Summit this year. And with that, Council President, I turn it back to you for discussion.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments, anything they'd like to say?
I can't wait to participate in this.
Yep, okay.
This is really good.
Yes.
Really good news.
I'm very excited about this because I, prior to being on council chair at the Recycling Advisory Committee, and we, it was a lot of stops and starts in terms of composting, and we had composting at the high school until we didn't. And so I'm very excited, you know, Karen and I went and visited a lot of composting options, and, you know, a lot of dead ends, so I'm really pleased that this one is actually going through. I think this will be a great opportunity, a really good way to reduce our waste stream and instead have beneficial use of, use of, of the food waste. So I think if no one has any questions or comments, I guess it's not something we have to vote on, so we'll just say, great job, and-
All right. Let's get going.
And move on. Okay. So then I guess our last item is any council members' comments, new business. Anyone? No takers? Okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Nice job.